Good evenings. Welcome to early work sessions of the Hanover City Council. Today is Tuesday, July the 11th. The meeting's called Order at 6:00 PM. Let the record show all council members are present with the exception of council members Feaster and Nelson. The first item on the agenda is a presentation and discuss the general fund budget for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Mr. Herman?
Hello, everybody. Welcome to the budget this year. We have a couple newbies, so I hope you survive the grueling summer of this. This is going to be the, probably the most information you get in our budget meetings, that there's quite a bit that we're going to go through tonight, but we'll get through it. So looking at our budget, we always start with the current year and where we're going to be going into the new year. So looking at our various revenues, property tax, we're right on track with that. Sales tax, we're actually doing better than expected. We've been running about 5% over budget for most of the years. This last revenues we got actually was the first month that were actually decreased from the same month last year. So not sure if that's going to be a trend or not, but that kind of tempered expert expectations for the rest of the year. Regardless, you can see that we've kind of trended pretty close to what our projected numbers were, and we should end up between 3% and 4% over what our expectations were. So that's, that's a good, good thing for this year. Franchise fees, we're in charge with that. License permits, we're actually a little bit less than what we expected, but it's, that's always hard to tell depending on what we have coming in for permits. Certainly, our residential has slowed down. We're finishing out probably the last development that we have. You know, you'll see in the projections for the future, we don't really have anything for residential. So that's going to be the first time that I remember that we've been in that position. Rentals, this is our tower leases that we have with the communication companies. I think we actually picked up the wrong budget. We were next, actually this next year's budget number that we picked up, so we're a little bit behind that. So you'll see roughly the same number what I used for FY 2024, but we're getting what we expect there. Interest income, we're quite a bit above our rates of, there's, you know, the downside, the interest rates increasing, but there's also the other side. We're, we're certainly getting more revenue than we've gotten in a good while. Most of our CDs that we're investing in now are in the 45% range. We haven't seen that in a long time. So that's certainly a positive. Then miscellaneous, this has been a little bit of a challenge for us, but we get recorded in the miscellaneous some of the, as we transition into our lease program with Enterprise, there is, when we sell, you know, basically part of the program is when we sell our existing vehicles, we get the proceeds back from that. That's kind of all an offset, I guess, to the lease costs that we have. And I've shown that in miscellaneous revenue, but actually a better way to show that, it's going to be other sources and actually way when we do our audit, they're recorded in sale of fixed assets. So, so I kind of separated out of that and added it to there just to make it more consistent. So with that, miscellaneous, we're a little bit above, this 133 really is more related to insurance element that we got for the police substation electrical problems that we had with the line coming in. So we have the corresponding expense, and so there's a, that's zero effect of. As far as the sale of fixed assets, the list that Enterprise gave us are what was kind of in the works. We have quite a bit of vehicles that we're going to be selling this year. Actually, I don't think it's going to happen. They'll probably transfer over to next year, which has been the case for the last couple of years. It's taken a while to get going just because of the supply chain issues and all that. We are getting some vehicles in. We've got a few. We've got a number of them in the works. When we actually get those, we're not quite certain. We'll get some this year. Next year, we'll probably be full into it for the first time since we started the program.
Those numbers represent the vehicles we initially anticipated for this year that may flow into next year?
Yeah, we're a couple of years behind, so we're trying to catch up. So, and you'll see the lease numbers for next year's budget are considerably higher than what we expected because of the pent-up man basically for that. And you're going to see more in the front end of the higher revenue numbers because what we're selling is vehicles we own, so we get the full price of that. Later on, when we're in the program itself, we lease the vehicles and then, you know, we get the value, increase in value, I guess, from what we pay on it. And given the fact that we usually get favorable pricing as government, there's a lot of advantages with being a government in that program and the used car market being strong. Unfortunately, that's all kind of changed the last couple of years with the pandemic and supply chain issues. They're saying they're not getting their discounts from the manufacturers like they were before, and then the resale is a little bit challenged. So, so we're not getting quite what we expected. I'm hoping that's temporary, but we'll certainly see more revenue coming in the front end, so.
In the, what, next two years maybe? But eventually it's going to level back down.
This year and next, and then after probably the third year, we'll represent even what the program will be going.
Using that term, the 2022-23 budget of 65.5 represents a typical year?
Actually, that was more, that's just miscellaneous. The 184 is what we actually, I separated that out of, that's what we expected to be in this. Their projections were that we had a lot more coming in. I doubt if we're going to even make the 184 that's going to carry over to next year. So it's just a question of timing of all that. And it's really been kind of hard to evaluate it because we haven't really got enough to really work with to see what we're going to get with. So that's just where we're at right now. So actually, all this, you know, certainly in the revenue side, we're actually well positioned this year. We're ahead of the curve, so that's very favorable going through the end of the year. On the expenditure side, I'm kind of showing you two different views. We, you know, shown by departments, also by category. I'm going to more focus on the category, subcategories, because that's kind of how we actually do the expenditures. You know, the departments are just grouping some of that, so it's a little bit of both. But I'm going to start off with personnel, then I'm going to actually have Kim come up and, and kind of help on this a little bit more. This has been really a big thing, and you, I'm sure, heard in the news, and everybody's having the same issues of turnover and getting people to work and, you know, and shortages of labor, and, and we are getting hit pretty hard this year with it. And, and so it's, it's kind of a quandary because we're not having the people we need to work, but yet we're realizing savings that we're not spending on personnel. So you'd say that's a good thing, but it's really not because we're giving up service levels and we're really stressing our workforce here to try to cover and all that. But, you know, as you can see, basically our projections are quite a bit under what our budget amount is, and, and most of that's really personnel in, in those shortages. And so with that, I'm going to, I want Kim kind of more expand on that.
Can I ask a quick question, though?
Sure.
Under fire, you've got a, a difference of 195,000. Is that?
Well, there's other things. The, you know, this reflects, that reflects the full variance. This is just the personnel part of it. There's, you know, other stuff in the various categories and services, supplies as well.
Right. But doesn't a portion of that 195 represent the position that we, that we combined when we, when we looked at their, their resources?
Well, yeah, part of that is that. We, we basically were looking to, we didn't replace a assistant chief position. We didn't fill it. And so that's, actually on the fire side, that, that probably explains more of it rather than the, they've had some turnover as well, but we're that, and then we basically have two positions we were going to add to displace that. We fired one, and we're in the process of looking at the other, so we're working towards that. So.
If I remember correctly, that was a fairly substantial number.
Right, right. So certainly for the fire, that is more the case there, but I think for the other departments is related to the turnover.
Actual turnover, yeah.
So I'll turn it over to Kim for just a little bit.
Before Kim starts, I would like to mention, of course, Jana is retiring in, is it five days now?
Four days.
Who's counting? So that'll, that'll be next week, and we're certainly going to miss her, but Kim Lopez will be the new Director of Human Resources. She's been with the city for about 10 years now, has done an incredible job, so.
So you're already mailing it in?
She's been training all this time.
This is called succession planning.
That's it, that's definitely it, so.
We definitely do do that succession planning. So tonight, I'm going to be talking about compensation. I'm going to do my best to address these numbers here, as well as kind of tell you how we actually come up with our recommendations.
I'm going to come in a little bit too early, Kim. I'm sorry. Yep, sorry. My bad.
She's going to, when we get to the next year budget, we definitely see that sort of part.
Introduction.
I just got this all gathered. I just.
Introductions are out of the way.
I will, I will say, like, police, for instance, a lot of that is because very, we've had a bunch of turnover during COVID that we're actually still making up for. Police department, they, it takes a while to recruit for those positions. They're highly skilled. Finding sworn officers takes several months to do. And with, in our dispatch department, those applicants, although we get very many, they're unexperienced. So we put them through, take them to DINKO 911, they, we learn their skills, and we end up hiring them, but a lot of times they don't make it through our, what we call our introductory period, which is the first 12 months. And it's because it's, it's a very difficult multitasking position. And so what a lot of that police turnover is going, going to be due to that introductory period.
Training cost.
And some of, some of that. And it's, it's, it's really all we can do is do our very best in recruitment, and we have done that by working with marketing to improve our marketing videos, our campaigning. We've, Mark Stewart updated their website for communications officer, and then with police officers, we've updated those videos as well. So a lot of that has to do in some of our turnover, like he was mentioning, in streets and parks. Those are, those, that streets is, I believe, a retirement not too long ago, someone who'd been here a while. And in parks, that was from the previous fiscal year that we recruited for, so. And that took us a little bit to recruit for, because those positions are really hard to find, too. Their entry level in many cases. Does that answer that briefly?
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll get it right the next time, so. So on the services, supplies portion of this, we also have actually partially offsets some of the savings. Kind of looking at the various elements of that, the city manager, you have budget, we have remaining comp plan carried over that was in this year, as well as the public safety monument that we're funding out of that department. And then looking at maintenance, we have a lot of things that were increased and some less, and so it looks like they're just barely over, but there's a lot of things going on with them. Fuels were quite a bit less because last year, the gas prices were quite a bit more. So we budgeted anticipating that, and fortunately, it's been a little bit reduced this year. Vehicle repairs have increased, and because we've had such a delay in getting our vehicles replaced, we're keeping them, we've kept them longer than we expected to. And so a result of that, we have more repairs than happened with that. And then the repair of 150,000 I mentioned before, the electrical problems we had last November. Okay, the lease payments were actually less than what we anticipated that we record in, in maintenance, just because we haven't got the vehicles. And so all that together translates to where, again, most of the variance here is related to personnel. You know, this capital and services supplies, kind of, part of that's reclass, the lease, from the cars that we budget for the, basically the upfront capital, like say a police car, we buy it for whatever amount, and then it's about half again as much more with all the peripheral stuff we add to it. Every bit of that, that's over $10,000, we pay half of that upfront. And we've shown that as capital before, but I guess in getting more used to what we're doing with that, it's really more just a prepaid lease cost. So we reclass that to the, this other category. So these kind of offset each other. So long story short is, this variance is really primarily due to our turnover in personnel for the current year. So what that leaves us is a pretty substantial benefit, I guess, in fund balance, or an increase in fund balance. So we're going to end the year roughly at 44%, which is quite high and higher than we really certainly planned for. But, you know, on the bright side, we're going to need that looking forward, and, and so that's going to go down. And I've said that for the last couple of years, so, so you're thinking, well, you know, you've said that before and it's not happened. It's going to come. We've just had some favorable things and some actually, some unfavorable things with the personnel that have actually benefited us, and I don't think that will continue as well. But again, that is very helpful going forward because we know we're, as we transition to build out and, and with our revenues leveling off, we're going to need every bit of that.
So just to, just to clarify, because I, I could, could, you as well, you, on the personnel side, what we've seen this year, you said you don't think that's going to continue, or do?
I don't. I think we're still going to have some, but I think it's going to improve. In fact, I think we've already seen recently, we've, we're almost back at full positions in police and fire both, I believe. So we're training back. So, and then we've got a pretty aggressive plan that Kim's going to show you far as retention to solidify that going forward, because it's gotten real competitive, and we have to stay in the game. And, and that's tough for us. And that's partly good that we have something to work with, or we would be really hurting right now.
So I know when we had our retreat a few weeks ago, when you kind of showed the five-year look, certainly didn't reflect this number for this next year. So looking ahead, I think at one point, I think you were showing, like, right around the bare minimum policy compliance on fund balance. Does this change that at all?
A little bit. It does. Again, we, that was kind of a preliminary look. What you saw was based on this current year budget numbers, and so it wasn't really reflective of, we hadn't yet run all our estimates for the current budget year as far as actual. So we did, we have benefited some from that, and that buys us a little bit of time. Basically, that kind of pushes it out a year, is what it does. So looking at our revenues going into next year budget, as you've, I've shown you before, you know, we got these, the big three here that make up 90% of our budget. So as always, that's going to be your primary focus and the thing that really is where revenues are coming from. Every bit of it's important, but these are really going to drive the show. Looking over 10 years, you know, both the two, sales tax and property tax have averaged 5.2. On the others, everything else together has been fairly level. You know, it'll fluctuate, we'll have some years of increase, some years decrease, but over time, it's really been those top two that have really driven it. So looking at that, property tax and, and sales tax, both, we're looking to increase going into this next year, and I'll show you some more detail. And, and what I try to do with the budget, too, is give you some perspective of, you know, you see all these numbers, and then I'll show you what changed from last year. And it's hard to really get your arms around it when you don't work with it every day. And so I'll try to provide some history and some other perspectives to help you get a feel and perspective of what, what we're really looking at. And looking at, you know, basically, this is our annual increase in existing properties. So every year, you know, our assess valuation, we have two components. We get new growth, you know, new construction added to the tax rolls, and we also get the increase based on existing properties. And so separating out all the new growth and looking back over 25 years, you can see that this is anything but static and leveling, and it's varied considerably. And again, this is our existing properties. And, you know, none of, this isn't going to absolutely correlate to any particular property here, but in total, this is what the city sees with the assessment we get. And so with this, and you know, if you're looking at our last five years, yeah, it's been really above market and what we've seen before, you know, 5%. If we go back to five years before that, it was, it's been steady for a while now, probably 10 years. Five years before that, it was actually averaged a slight decrease over a five-year period. So I will guarantee you that it's not going to stay here, and we're going to have this again at some point in the way for some period of time.
Have you looked into how we still not passed any of the property tax relief measures may or may not affect our, our income?
We, you know, we just saw that, and, and I don't, well, some of them may. I think the limit on the commercial property, actually, the laws of commercial property don't favor us anyway in the current process, so I think that's going to be a little bit more. On the residential side, I don't think there's anything that will get this from a city perspective, but yet we, we still have to look at.
Yeah, I think if, if you notice what the Senate and the House compromised on, of course, they did the increased homestead valuation for the purpose of calculating school district taxes, and they're doing what they're calling a three-year pilot program and decreasing the appraised value of non-homesteaded properties. And it does appear that that would apply to cities, not just school districts. So, and that's for properties $5 million and below, so.
It's non-homestead, so if, if it is your homestead, it's not affected?
Correct, correct.
You know, yeah, that, that affects rental property and short-term rentals. That's exactly what that affects.
Yeah. So yet to be, yet to be determined on that. So this is going to be a factor for us. So when we look at our five-year forecast, and I'm projecting, you know, basically our three and a half is what we're limited to with the legislature and the most that we will get, increase in revenues per se. These will affect that, and we have a year, like, one of these that drives our assess valuation down, and theoretically, we could raise our tax rate and be within limits of that without having to go through a vote. But I would ask, which one of you guys would suggest that we raise our tax rate? So, and then, so what's going to happen is, it stays the same. And so what we do, we ratchet our revenues down as we go through, because then when it goes up again, again, we're limited to that 3.5%. So, which is a problem I've had all along with this legislation, and it's just going to be a fact of life for us as we go forward. So, you know, looking at, again, mentioning our future projections, you know, this year, we're showing a pretty big increase because this will probably be the last year we see this in a while, but, you know, the preliminary values show a $40 million, this used to be normal for us 10 years ago to have 40, 50 million dollars a year new growth. We haven't seen that in a while, but as we finish up this last development, that's what they're showing with that. And we'll get some carryover for the next couple of years. Because of the, you know, 10% cap, the valuation is still there. We just can't realize the revenue from it, so they'll carry over. So we're pretty well guaranteed that we'll get our 3.5% probably the next couple of years with that. After that, no guarantees, but, you know, I, I don't see anything that, you know, I think it's reasonable to say we'll be in the 3, 3.5% range over five years. Again, discounting the fact that if we have a big housing correction, I could blow this all in the water. So that's what we're kind of working with. So with, you know, with this, showing our new growth in that, even though our increased valuation is there, that will force us to reduce our tax rate. So right now, I, my guess is it'll be in the 52 cent range from 54, so, but it'll depend on what the final tax roll is with that in the calculation. So, and that's where we get to. We still get the increased value, but we limit the revenue we can get by that by adjusting the tax. we can get by that by adjusting the tax rate. So it basically forces it to decrease.
We don't, you'll have to, I don't know, you probably have it later in the presentation, but there was that, there's a part of the legislation that allows you to carry over?
Right. And using the incremental, unused increment.
Do we still have a little bit of that left or have we used that?
We've used that for two years. There's, it was for a three-year thing. And so I think we might, but I'm not sure because there was new legislation and, and there's some things that address that. I have a meeting I'll be going to in two weeks with, at Dent County Tax Assessor and we'll get schooled on the, the new implications for that calculation. But I don't have the answer to that yet. So potentially, we might have that, some of that available for this year, but that'll probably be the last year for that for a while. So on the sales tax side, now this shows what, you know, we've had good positive growth and we expect that to continue into next year. So if you look at our history of that, you know, a 10-year history, we've averaged 5.6% in the last five years, 7.6. And so that's been, and we've seen that throughout Texas. So we're certainly in the mix of that, you know, going forward as our retail centers are basically mature now and we're not going to be adding much new. It's probably going to be more kind of along the lines of inflation and well, whatever inflation is going to be. So probably three, you know, I'd get my guess rather than the five and seven, it would be more in the 3% range, which would still be a positive thing. But again, always subject to recession and other elements with that. We've been pretty fortunate, we've only had one year of a decrease since we, you know, since the shops and marketplace went in. So we've done really well there. And so we really have a pretty consistent tax base. But you know, certainly that growth can change. Again, if you look at our history, this, this shows our actual collections and seasonal. All these flags are probably going to be February, which would be reflect Christmas sales. This yellow line reflects the 12-month rolling average. And so what is really good to see with that, you can see where we progressed. But when we see a little dip here, you know, this was, oh, we don't go back. If you go back to 2008, you can probably see a dip. But this last month, we're seeing a little dip there. But I don't know yet if that's a sign of weakening and going less or if that's just like a one-time thing. So that's yet to be determined. So that we may have to counter optimism a little bit if we see that continue for another month or two. So looking at, you know, by areas, we have, you know, basically our main elements of our sales tax along 407, shops, marketplace, 407. And the thing that's really changed for us is, is our internet sales. And you can see, looking at our, you know, comparing 2019 to 2023, we went from 7% of our total tax, sales tax to 19% internet. So online sales are bringing in revenue that, pretty substantial actually, that equals what we did at the shops.
Did legislation affect the internet sales and how things are taxed with us?
Went back, it was, it was a Supreme Court ruling back around 2018 or so.
Maybe talk about, I know there's been all of the discussion about the destination base and things like that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. And I think at present, that's kind of.
Kind of data.
Kind of just hanging out.
It would actually be to our benefit if it was destination. Because we don't, we don't have the big warehouse.
Where are those internet sales coming from, like the local?
Amazon, Apple.
Same report, sales too.
Those are based on destination.
Okay, those are, all right, that was almost, ship two is the destination. So me and Mr. Prime are doing good.
Keep going.
Yeah, so that's, that's helping us out there. So you can see the big change, you know, in that. And so, you know, the other, if you look into the shops, it's kind of on the, actually a little bit less this year, so it's varied a little bit. Marketplace has been a consistent performer, obviously. So that just kind of gives you a feel for, you know, where that's coming from.
Is FM 407 comprised of, you've got other in FM 407, so.
For, the other recipe for it would be from the marketplace to Highland Village Road and Highland Village Road to Sellmore. Just, just going down the rest of the highway.
So FM 407 would be from market, from marketplace to?
Sellmore.
Sellmore?
Sellmore.
And other again is what?
Other can be, it's going to be utilities, it's going to be services, a number of things. It just didn't really neatly fit in a category as I write it out.
Is that, where, where do I, because I've been checking my bills for like my cellphone and my internet, like Hulu and Netflix and all, is that coming to us? It says it is.
We, we get, what's unclear is, is the telecable franchise. And with your streaming, they're not paying that. And there's some cities that have sued and we'll see how that works out. But sales tax should, yes.
Okay. I just, I did change my bill from Lewisville to Highland Village to get it back here because it was going to Lewisville.
The zip code is.
And that's always been the sales tax issue is the zip code.
I check my bill every month, call them.
So, so looking at, you know, going down the list, franchise fees is their other part of our big three, but it's actually pretty stable, I guess. It doesn't change much. But actually this year, last year, it actually ended up ahead a little bit. Gas, we had a cold winter that had more gas usage and so that resulted in that. And so because of that, we use last year's number to protect forward and so we continued that. So hopefully, you know, it will stay at that level. But again, it'll vary, you know, if we have a real hot summer, our electric, you know, will increase. This, you know, electric is our biggest element of that, 59%. Oh, my gas and telecable actually is gradually decreasing every year. It's a little bit less, you know, spectrum and frontier, frontier more so than spectrum going forward, but that's kind of what that is. Looking at our license permits, you know, we're under what we expected. And actually, we're going to see this number actually going down over the next several years. There's going to be always a certain amount of permits we have, our pool permits, sprinkler permits, you know, various work we do, contractor registration. But as far as new residential homes, I show none. Because once we finish out, we will have a few infill here and there, but we don't really have any developments in the works right now. Public safety fees, this kind of shows what we're getting from this. The EMS fees are a big part of that. We increased our rates last year and brought them up to kind of market. The way we do that, we only bill our residents what insurance will pay and we don't balance bill for any amount over that. So what we try to do is charge the highest that insurance will pay to just get what we can from. So we do lose a little bit in that, but we still, you know, that's increased a good bit from the last couple of years with that increase. The shops, this is arrangement we have with a substation there and having officers spend a certain amount of time there. We have a little bit of an increase built in for that for next year. LISD SRO, we got actually our second officer last year. We actually only budgeted half at the time, not knowing that it was going to be three quarters. So we're a little bit ahead of that this year, in it for this next year budget. Our service fee, that's for unincorporated areas in Dent County that we provide service for if needed, warrant permits. And so that comprises basically your public safety fees.
So, so the second SRO, we're, we're providing three quarters of the funding?
They, LISD.
LISD is, okay. Is that the same amount they were doing last year or was it 100% last year?
No, it was three quarters.
Okay. And that's the way it's going to be.
And the other, one other one has been half.
Yeah, it's always been half. Is, and it's, it's going to stay three quarters, right?
That's my understanding, unless I.
No, nothing's been talked about to change there.
Rentals, you know, I explained this, you know, we showed them actually last, this year's budget last year, so we're, you know, we're going to keep that the same. Court, show you a little history here, you know, back, you know, it's been a good while since we've had a little bit more volume, but we've been pretty level since. And this is reflective of our community policing model. And you know, we're not, our objective is not to provide revenue and, and write tickets and get compliance, but you know, there's a certain level that we need to do to make that work. And so we've been pretty consistent with that. Park recreation fees, they're staying right about the same, which is partial recovery for the recreation programs that we do. Interest income, interest rates are high, they're going to probably stay that way for at least the next year. And so we're going to actually project some more revenue. So that's certainly a benefit to us.
Have you ever seen a 206% increase?
Yeah. When you start small, it increases pretty quick. We've showed the converse of that some years too. So, and then the miscellaneous, again, you know, breaking that out between the two, based on their schedule, they're showing 186,000 that next year. And so it'll be the combination of those two, we'll see where, where that ends up. And this is going to be off, more than offset on the expenditure side, but you know, certainly that, yeah, looking at it holistically, that lessens the cost of us acquiring revenue. So in total, you know, we're looking at a just under 7% increase on the revenue side. Then getting to our expenditures, again, this shows the department view of that. Let's see. The, I always like to help, again, put this in perspective, when we show an increase in our base budget, you know, we're showing 4%, 4.6%. But this is just our continuing budget without adding any new things. This is what we're expecting at the cost this year. And we're comparing to last year's approved budget. However, last year's approved budget included a lot of one-time expenditures that we had with our supplemental and all that. So to make it apples and apples, if I take those non-recurring supplemental expenditures that we had budgeted last year, remove those and compare that to an adjusted budget, we actually have a 5.7% increase this year, which is way more than what we typically do on a base budget. This would be more reflective of a final approved budget with supplemental programs that we had. But this has to do mostly with our personnel plan. And with that, we are, Kim's.
So on the expenditures, where do we show, I mean, the bonds that we've issued at 1.2%? Where do we show that on our books? Because we haven't spent the money.
We're spending it.
No, we're spending it, but I mean, what is our unspent bond?
That's going to be in our special revenue funds. And next meeting, you'll see all that.
Okay.
That's basically everything related to the bond issues in the capital projects fund.
Because I mean, we're showing interest income from that.
Well, we're showing interest income from our reserves or fund balance.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. So that's all the bonds, everything is separate?
That's separate.
Okay.
In fact, the interest from the, from the bond issue that we proceeds will go directly to the projects, the parts and streets projects.
So this is just, this is off of?
This is just our.
Our reserves.
And you know, and we get, you know, with our tax levy, that we get most of our revenues, you know, by the end of January, first part of the year. And so for six months of the year, we take that and invest what we can and get what we can from it and then take it out as needed. We let our investments to where we can try to maximize what earnings we get. So that's where all that comes from.
Thank you.
That's your turn for real.
This time you beat. All right. So we're going to discuss our compensation process and how we come up with what we recommend for your salaries. So our compensation, our compensation system was reviewed by Ray and Associates in the early 2000s. They create our job descriptions, our pay schedules, they determine what our market cities would be, and then how it's currently managed as we do it in-house. And we review positions on a case-by-case basis and we review our market and show that we're in mid-market with our other cities. And we also have UTA master's degree students. They've also been reviewing our, our job descriptions, our pay plans, our salaries to make sure that our processes are still in line with our strategies. Our market cities was also recently reviewed in 2017 and brought to council. And Gina actually brought them to make sure that we have a true match, which is basically means we look at the demographics, the location of the city, are they similar size to us? Do they have similar jobs as I, as we do? So we can get that true match. So a park tick here is a park tick over there. And our finance department structure is similar here as it is the other matching city. Council did approve those market cities unanimously. Those market cities consist of Colleyville, Capel, Corinth, Flower Mound, Keller, Lewisville, Little Elm, Murphy, Saxon, as well as Southlake. And you'll notice that some of them are based off of yes, location like Flower Mound and Lewisville. Some are based off of population, similar full-time, which typically also means similar jobs, square miles as well. So there's lots of different aspects that go into determining our market cities and we took a big deep dive into doing that in 2017. So our compensation strategy is our goal is to stay in mid-market with our matching cities. Now depending on the position, and we do look at private sector as we need to, to make sure we're staying in line with that as well as best as we can. Our benefit strategy is to stay top 25% because we want to have a rich benefit package for our employees and ensure that that is a great recruitment strategy to do so. Our ultimate goal is of course provide a place people don't want to leave. So autonomy, make sure people love working here, we engage with them. But we also want to be fiscally sustainable and that's part of the mid-market strategy as well. And our goal is of course stabilize turnover, make sure we can keep that at a good level, increase tenure.
What's considered stable turnover percentage-wise?
I actually have that data at the very, towards the end of this presentation, if you don't mind. Waiting just a few minutes. We also look at our employment cost index, our ECI. So you'll notice here, wages and salaries increased 4.7%. We have this line here that says three, is at 3%. So you can see that through COVID, it increased, wages and salaries increased pretty drastically. And benefits, we're seeing a stable out about 5%. This is the latest data for March 2023. We're also looking at our consumer price index. You'll notice at 5% here, just so you can kind of have a frame of reference to look at, during COVID, again, it drastically increased, no surprise there. We are seeing a little bit of a, just a decrease of 4.7 this year. So it did, it did decrease from the 9.4 July, July of last year. So that kind of gives you a little perspective of what we're dealing with when the sale of goods are all increasing, salaries are, are increasing as well in the area. So the next thing I'm going to get into is I pulled three positions. You can kind of see our strategy in looking at the market cities, trying to get everyone mid-market and what the plan is for this next year. So first one is part-time crossing guards. So you'll see 22, two ranges, 20, 23 ranges. So you'll notice last year we were very slightly below market, 1246 versus 12. I know that looks worse than it is. But most of our crossing guards were actually closer to the 1550 mark because they were here a very long time and they retired from being crossing guards. So we weren't really too concerned before, during this 22 year because everyone was pretty stable. But when we move on to 2023, again, it decreased a little bit as well, farther away from the midpoint at 1373 to $14. So somewhere in here is midpoint. So to address this, we are recommending, somehow this got a little wonky, $15 per hour, which will bring us right, right above the mid-market. This will help continue to recruit. We're currently fully staffed for the new. We're currently fully staffed for the new year, and we actually recruited at the lower rate. A big reason why people do the crossing guard is not necessarily for the money, from the feedback I received. A lot of it is because their kids go to those schools, or they're recently retired. But we still wanna stay competitive, and we still wanna make sure we have a good range.
So what that show, though, is, it's just a flat $15?
It is, a flat $15. We're gonna change our structure a little bit and do a flat 15, and then every year adjust with the mid-market as we need to, instead of having a range for that many years.
But we were down a, the last couple of months.
We were, and a lot, a lot of those were relocation and people who, who left. And we had one that actually left because of potential money that I know of. The other position is utility technician, so 2022 ranges. So with this, we did, we updated our pay schedules 5%. So this is with us updating on 5% last year, and you'll see mid-market was around 32 to 68. So we were actually above with this position. Going, and we were thought, oh, man, we got it, we're going, we're gonna be good, strategic, next year might look a little bit better. And you'll notice here, and we are at 41.6, so we're, we're a little bit below. So we're still, we're fighting, and our strategy for this position is we're gonna move all our general pay schedules up 3.5%, which will again, keep us in the game to compete for staffing. The last position we're gonna look at is police officer. So 2022 ranges, we updated our pay schedules 5% last year. And that brought us above the mid-market at 58.3, about $63,792. And then 2023 hit, and we're now far from that mid-line. So we went from 58 to 25. It's, this is how drastic our market cities are changing their data so quickly. And it's very eye-bending to see how much we have to move our ranges every year. It's incredible. So our plan for police officer, drum roll please. And we are moving our, our pay schedules up 5%. Also for police officer, these are pay, our pay ranges, we're moving it from a PS7 to a PS8. So the difference between a PS7 and PS8 is 5%, so they're getting a 10%. I mean, in order to stay in the game, I'm at 67,4, but 70,681. So they're gonna be right above mid-market in order, in order to be able to recruit sworn officers.
We're at the top of our maximum.
I'm sorry, say that again?
We're at the top for maximum.
We are at the top of maximum, we have ranges. And some of these other cities have step schedules, and they end at year seven or year eight, whereas we have a little bit more growth for our staff.
So on the top, on the, on the maximum, I know you've got us at 58.3% on the minimum. Uh, yeah, is that right?
Yes. So right now, we are gonna be at 58.3, the goal is to be mid-market, which is right here. So we're gonna be above mid-market at 70. And our neighboring cities are around 72, and then Louisville's about 77.
Didn't Louisville say that they wanted to be first in the market?
They did wanna be first in the market, that's, so the goal is to be sustain, fiscally sustainable, stay in the game, have great benefits, stay at that 25% of great benefits, top of the market, and then have, have very good salaries in order to retain, because you remember, people don't work at Highland Village just for the pay. They work for the great supervisors, the training we provide, our size, our community feel. It's not just, it's autonomy, there's more than that. But salaries is a very important part of that, and this allows us to stay in that game and still recruit very well.
How many police officers live in Highland Village?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Chief?
75.
You say it's a handful.
Sims, you, Slicker, Dallow.
Harning.
Harning's five.
Five.
Which is unusual, right?
Yes.
You got two? I, I just bring that up, I mean, we have, we lost two people to Keller last year. One big issue was drive time. So they didn't have to drive as far to get to the job and similar, similar dollars. And so seeing this, hopefully that will, you know, recognize us, our people are driving to us.
I think the two you're thinking of is actually Roanoke, if I remember correctly, and one left because of proximity, Roanoke's closer. And the other individual thought they would, you know, they wanted to, they said they wanted advancement opportunity, additional advancement opportunity.
I'm just, I'm just.
As well, and it might be closer.
Relaying discussion, but I mean, the point is, is drive time makes a big difference, I know from fire with your schedule, lets people drive further.
But having police officers live in the same city that they work is actually rare.
It is rare.
Yes.
Now, how many police officers live in our city?
Five.
I mean, no, no.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, from other places, yeah, a lot, a lot.
I just wanna make a, bring this back to the discussion Ken had, the numbers. The, the up-schedule, 5% here, as well as the three and a half in the other group. Those are already reflected in the anticipated budget for next year, correct?
See, I mean, do we have any, and I know this is, you might as well roll the dice and pick a number, but, you know, last year, I think, if you go back a couple of slides, I think what we did last year put us at 58.3, and then a year later, we're at 25. Do we have any, any anticipation of what we're gonna look at a year from now?
Um, I would love to say I do. A lot of our market cities are pretty closed-mouth about what they're doing. And we did go to MHR Director type roundtable meeting, and the numbers they were throwing out, not that they're necessarily our market cities, was between 2.5 to 4%. But it's really, it's, they're going to fluctuate. And Louisville, for instance, they adjusted in April, which are reflective in our numbers, so.
I mean, we're all dealing with the same revenue challenges. I mean, are they robbing Peter to pay Paul to do this?
I can only guess, I can only guess.
They're probably watching this presentation right now.
Or is this, is this more, is this more of a byproduct of other cities have much more sales tax revenue that they can use for stuff like this?
Well, you look at Louisville and the growth they've had, both from a property tax, property tax base and sales tax base.
Flower Mound has dedicated sales tax revenue to pay for their police and fire.
Yeah.
And some of the others may have that crime control district as well.
You look at the, the cities that are involved there, Louisville's growing, Flower Mound's growing, Southlake's growing, Little Elm's growing, Keller's expanding, Colleyville is expanding, Corinth is expanding, both in commercial and sales and residential. So they're all going to be expanding far, at a, at a much greater pace than we're going to.
Actually, it gets worse than that, you got Prosper and Frisco's, and they're, they're leading the charge. You know, they've been for years, because if you're paying top dollar, people are going there, then we're having to compete. Plus, you got a perfect storm too, of less people getting in the game on the police side, given the, something's going on, so it's, it's a challenge.
I see it becoming more of a challenge in the years ahead, though.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm worried about, that's what I'm worried about is, you know, we're doing this now, and then we're gonna be at 58% for about five minutes. And then, you know, is, is there, have you had any conversations at all about some way where you can stabilize so we're not every year having to go through this, this?
Um, I would say it's really up to the cities to, who would determine, determine that salary thing. No, I mean, we're going to have to continue to fight for mid-market, this is our best strategy.
Have a transfer portal or something.
Chief, what's the average cost of a, the academy to save?
Chief, I mean, it's cost of recruit, of pay, a salary for six months. Minimum training cost of about two grand to send him to the academy. So you're talking half your salary with low benefits, 15, 17, about $25,000.
Didn't we, didn't we, I forget when it was we had the conversation, it was during the budget meeting. We talked about over, over a five-year period, it's about $50,000 in, in training expenses per, per person. Is that, was that, if I remember that right, over five years commutatively?
So. The numbers, I mean, I mean, I've seen so many different articles, and how you put it on it is, you wanna count it for bringing a person on and spending five years of hiring them.
You said it takes about five years to really get them seasoned, you know, where you're comfortable, where they're comfortable. And I think the number you gave was after, at that point, you've invested about 50 grand, and then that's when they're leaving.
Which, I mean, we're throwing money away is what I, I think I said, so. You got 10-year officers who've accumulated a million dollars in salary and benefits and/or training after 10 years, and they leave. That's, that hurts.
Of course it hurts, but I will also like to mention that in the last 10 years, I looked at 10 years worth of data, we only had two sergeants who, who left. One went for another, a larger city, the other individual passed away. So with that being said, once you get to a corporal position, there's really not much room to advance after that. So a lot of times, our employees are saying, well, I'm leaving because advancement opportunities, they're not mentioning pay. They're mentioning advancement, or they're relocating, that's what I'm seeing in the police department. Or they don't make it through their introductory period like in dispatch, and it's performance-related.
It appears to me that if we don't make the changes that are suggested, that salary will quickly become one of the issues.
Yes, I mean, the goal, the goal is to stay mid-market, and this will do it. This, this keeps us in the game, and that's the goal. Every year, get back in the ballgame and compete for our best employees we can.
I mean, this, the whole conversation is a very dampening conversation, if you will.
It is.
But the highlight here is, we do have 76 acres that we need to be very careful of in the future and what we do with it. And we just need to go after it.
We just lost two acres.
We just lost two acres. 78. Yeah, but that, we have to be careful where we're going, and we have to look at it very objectively.
What does this, what does it, so one of the things I've heard talk in, in having conversations with, with members is predictability in compensation. What is, what does this do versus a more military-style paying compensation program?
So, I can choose. Let me go to, I think it'll help you. Okay, so I looked, over the last 10 years, I looked at, I just looked at police officer, and I looked at some dispatch as well. I looked at the 10 years, so these are different police officer, A, B, C, D, E, so those are people. These are their amount of years of service. And from their, when they first started here to their last known salary, so some of them are, and some of them are current employees, they had a 40, 41% growth. So average increase per year has been 5%, 4%. So with a step schedule, typically those steps are 2.5 to 3%. This show, this is indicative of, with our ranges, we are staying incredibly competitive, and we're doing at times more than our other market cities in fighting the compensation struggle. So when you say military-style.
Step program.
Or step program, that, we are staying very competitive, and when you look at these, I say we, we are going to update some of our marketing materials to emphasize this.
That's where I was going, is how to.
Yeah, we're gonna update our marketing to emphasize this a little bit more, and provide better, a little bit more communication with the police department and public safety to demonstrate this. But I assure you, we are, we are staying very competitive with the mid-market strategy. Yes, Jim?
Can I say something?
Yeah, please.
So with a, a step schedule, you hit the top step and then you're done. So with our ranges and the way we're managing our ranges, number one, they have more time to get to the top, and you actually don't want to be at the top, because then you're done. So it, it's just a different way to look at it. And again, like Kim said, the, the plan is to have a little more education and make sure everyone kind of understands that.
So to wrap up what our strategy is for this year, we're gonna increase public safety pay schedule 5%. We're gonna move the communications officer to the public safety pay schedule. And we're going to increase the general pay schedule 3.5%.
Where had, where had communications been prior to?
The general, because they're not, they're not sworn, so we had them on the general side. But this allows us to, so communications officer was really the only one on the general pay schedule that need a little bit more of an increase based off the market to their pay schedule. Total budget increase will be 7.25. This allows us to address our, our market strategy, our pay plans, as well as compression. So you mentioned turnover rates, I wanted to go over that real briefly, I'm sorry, it's at the very, very bottom. So this is from fiscal year 2015, this is this year so far. You'll notice that during COVID, it was 1401, it increased, it went 9.62 to 1401 to 1146. But last year, we went back to 8.92. So, and we're at about 8.33. So we're leveling out a little bit. And a lot of, a lot of what's been going on this last two years is hiring people and that struggle of getting the right people during this time, and there's been some delay in recruitment because of that.
And what we would consider good turnover would be anywhere between 7 to 12%.
7 to 12.
Question?
Thank you.
That's total turnover, how many people were released in that percentage? Thirteen that left, how many were released for performance or other?
Um. I have one. I actually have the number right here. Performance for general was 10, and public safety was four.
So 14.
That's a hundred and nineteen.
Actually, I lied, that's after, that's actually on the other slide, let's see. I actually don't have those numbers with me, I'm guilty.
The only reason I'm bringing it up, when we look at turnover numbers, you know, negative turnover is people we don't want to lose.
Sure.
So that number's gonna be less than this 13.
This is not indicative of, this is only introductory period, so this is not indicative of performance or.
Yeah, it would just be good to see, how many are we losing that we don't wanna lose? That number may be down to 5%.
In our, in our world, we call it, in our world, we call it attrition.
Sure, sure, of course.
And what do we ask them to leave their, we transition them to the competition?
Yeah.
No, I completely understand.
That's positive attrition, the negative attrition.
I will say, within this chart, these are not employees who left in the first six months or 12 months, which is typically based off performance, is why they don't make it through, but I'd be happy to apply that to you.
I mean, it's not terrible.
No, it's not.
These are around 10% where we wanna be.
Yeah, and if you notice, it's back to where it was before COVID. Pretty much. So some of our recruitment efforts include sponsoring candidates through the academies whenever we can, and providing internship opportunities, we have one in streets, which is kind of cool right now. And reduce time between recruitment and hire. That is a struggle when you only have very few applicants to pick from sometimes, but we do our best. And we are working with marketing to have a really strong marketing campaign that emphasizes our benefits and our community programs, our atmosphere. And then we have a referral program, so if an employee refers someone, they'll get a personal day, and then another one after they stay six months. Some other in-house strategies as we are emphasizing fit, fair pay, so that mid-market, having great benefits, respect, autonomy. And we also encourage people, we also encourage employees' ideas and make sure they. Um, we also encourage people, um, we also encourage employees' ideas and make sure they feel valued.
Um, I know the L A S D current technology programs, they have their fire academy, they're starting up, they've got a lot of things. Has our city looked at working any type of partnerships with the, uh, current technology, tech west and tech east?
Um, I believe last year our, um, our, the lady, lady in our apartment, Tara Hare, who's our HR general, generalist, has reached out to them. And she has been in contact with L A S D, um, with different strategies, one of which has been, um, one of our street intern. Actually, we learned that they were interested through that. Employee engagement surveys, we started that last year, so we can see where we can improve as well. And that wraps up my presentation, thank you very much.
Good.
Okay, so. Just going through the personnel, you know, the cost element of that, um, you know, we mentioned the seven point five, seven point two five, starting these, which is the largest increase since, you know, that I remember that we had. That translates to with benefits or employer costs that has to have seven hundred, almost, um, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, T M R S is actually pretty level, looking at our rates, you can see our history here, um, T R, T M R S. Um, if you're not familiar, is what we have for retirement in lieu of social security, it's two to one, so. We can expect the city to be somewhere around the fourteen percent range, uh, especially now that we've matured more and have some retirees and all that, so it's. It's, we wanted to level off and it pretty well has, is, is kind of gradually increased a little bit, just a little bit of increase this year, but. Um, insurance, this is a little bit of, uh, it's been something we've been holding our breath on. Um, our history hasn't been, um, good for the last couple of years, actually, and, and so, and it's just one of those things. And you'll have some good years and some bad years and then renewal, sometimes you just don't know where that's gonna go and. So I have, this represents an eight percent increase and so that's what I'm hoping for. We actually got a preliminary estimate of thirteen percent, which was way better than what we expected because we, they've led with as much as twenty, twenty-five percent in previous years and. Um, we have a great broker, Hickam Botham, Alvin Morris, and, and we have been very successful of them getting them down to, um, sometimes single digits. And that's what we're hoping for this time, so we're, you know, shooting for hopefully no more than eight percent. So I'm, I'm hanging on to that number until we find out for sure, uh, we should know within next few weeks.
Hopefully by next week.
Okay, good. But, you know, that's a challenge, um, insurance, you know, if we can keep it under ten percent, uh, you know, we feel like that's about, that's good. Uh, it'd be nice if we can get that, you know, to a lower number, but that's just been kind of how it's been. Longevity is, is, since we've had some turnover and we've had some retirements, um, that's kind of not increased much. Overtime decreased a little bit, but that's more in some of the field departments where, you know, it's more correcting our, our budgets to reflect history of that. Police and fire are staying about the same, um, actually both have been increased their overtime over the last couple of years to tree that up, so. Um, that's just kind of maintained going forward and, and they're actually right on track this year. Despite our vacancies, you know, they've, they've held the line and, and worked to, you know, they're, I will say that they're judicious with their use of that and they try to, to. Keep from having any excessive overtime. Changing base, um, that is when I look at, you know, the current year employees and, and who we have. And then comparing that to what we had for the comparable numbers last year budgeted and, and so basically this reflects turnover. So some of the retirements and they're replaced with, you know, lower cost and so we've seen the trend over the last few years. And we've had roughly a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand a year, lower numbers because of that, um, going forward, so. So with that, you know, we have a net, just write that seven hundred thousand, um, increase on the personnel side, um, reflective of all that. And looking at our expenditures, um, let's look at, again, I wanna step back and kind of give you a bigger picture, you know, look at our services supplies, that's basically everything. Other than personnel, capital, just all our supplies and, and services and employee costs and utilities and, um, street maintenance and all these other things and. And, and they're widely disparaging, disparate, and then, uh, we have supplemental requests along the way, so it's really hard to get a base standard to what to compare, so. When I look at what we spent for like over a period of years, you can kind of see a trend where we have a certain level here and kind of gradually increase here and then. For the last, um, three years, we've kind of stepped up to another level of that. And so that's what, you know, we kind of wanna take a little bit closer look at, again, to give you a perspective of that. And so, uh, looking at our subcategories and comparing that, so, okay, let's look at and compare to, this is a benchmark. And then compare, um, the numbers here, what our averages were for those, uh, three, three years. Then compare that to our projected year or budget year that we're looking at. And so when we look at the various changes, um, you can see, you know, professional services and, and the large part of that is, is maintenance contracts. You know, maintenance con- contracts, and this has to do with all our software maintenance and, and then, um, like our landscape maintenance and our roadway mowing and. Anything that we are in contract for, um, going forward, kind of commitments to, I mean, it's well over a million dollars a year, um, now is, is a line item total. And so we see some big changes there and that's gonna be, you know, a lot of our P D thing, you know, our, our flock cameras, our, you know, the agreement we deal with Axon for our tasers and. And, and body, well, body cameras and, and then our license plate readers and all these things that we need as part of our operations. Um, it's costly and, and that cost is, is ramped up in the last few years, um, pretty dramatically in some regards, you know. For our CAD software, we pay a hundred thousand dollars a year maintenance for that. For our accounting software, we're paying eighty thousand dollars a year or seventy to eighty thousand, you know, those things or HR software and. And so it's, you know, it all adds up and so that's really reflective of a much larger number there. Employee development, you know, looking at the threshold there, a hundred and sixty, um, training is a big, um, element of that. And then council, um, um, this is actually more of a one-time thing because the, um, every other year we have the mergers fly in. And so we budget that cost and so it just happens to be in years, so that's kind of reflective, so I think that's really fairly consistent. Um, that's, that makes it a little bit of an aberration. Supplies, uh, fuels, um, even though we had a decrease this year from what we expected, uh, in the current year, um. It's at a higher threshold than it was, you know, three, four years ago. Utilities, um, that reflects a couple of things, we have telephone replacement scheduled, um, for this year, so that ramps that up a little bit. But we also have, um, a surcharge that we're paying with coserv from Winter Storm Yuri that, um. For that. Time period where everybody just paid through the roof of that and, and so they had to resolve all that and so we have a surcharge that we're gonna be paying on for a number of years. So that's wrapped us up a little bit, um, that we're seeing there for your electricity. For other, um, some of our recreation programs, we, what we've done, we've, we've eliminated some of our programs and really concentrated more on a few of the really. Um, popular, um, high target ones, um, celebrate honor village, Christmas is a ranch, you know, we, we're spending more money on these. Street maintenance, um, we've ramped up our annual costs for that, for, you know, concrete panel replacement overlays, um, so forth. And then lease payments, um, and you're gonna see this reflected in the budget, you know, it's, again, this is kind of a latent effect of where we haven't been paying the lease. It's part of our program for the last couple of years and then getting everything in place is gonna be a much higher number than I wanted to see. So that's gonna, uh, it's gonna need to level off because we went into the program with a premise that we wanted to maintain. Somewhere in the five hundred thousand dollar range, um, for all our replacement, um, cause we were kind of paying that money, you know, buying. But we would get, um, newer fleet and have a consistent payment. But we're getting press real there, again, is what they're telling us is that they're not getting the manufacturer incentives, you know, their resale is not what it was and, and so. And the cost is twenty percent more for the vehicles themselves, so it's, I think it's partly an aftereffect, was it supply chain issues and I'm hopeful. And I've been reading here lately where use prices are gonna start having some relief and so we'll see where that goes. And with the conversion electric, there's a lot of variables, I'm not sure where that's actually gonna end up. But it's gonna be probably higher than our five hundred thousand dollar threshold going forward. You know, if we look at a four-year window, we're still on target because we didn't pay much at the front end of that. Um, but we'll have to see in a few years, reevaluate and make sure this what we want to do, keep going forward.
So it may be preliminary then to ask this question, but is that still a viable program for us?
And it's hard to tell and, and that's been my frustration, I can't really get a handle on it because we haven't had enough experience. And the full picture of things to really know and, and then with all this other things going on with the pandemic and supply chain and, and all that. There's no proper way to evaluate it, so it's, I would say, three years from now, um, we really probably need to take a hard look at that. And, and just to make sure that's, and it's more than likely any way we go, the cost is increased, it's gonna be a higher level. And it's gonna be more expensive for us and we have a lot of vehicles and a lot of equipment and that's just something that we're got to be prepared for. And then animal care is increased, um, with, uh, we renewed our lease with our facility, we're doing some improvements to, to that there and so, um. We're, we're really getting this on the cheap anyway for, for animal shelters, so it's, um, that's not a bad thing, uh, we're improving our service there, so. So this gives you a feel for going from here to there, um, and just, just a handful of things can identify a good bit of what that increase is. And it's really nothing extravagant or anything really different, it's just the higher cost of doing business.
You, you're showing an average.
Yeah, the next one shows. I was gonna say, the next one shows a twenty-three.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was going there because we're, we've got a two thousand nineteen to twenty-one average comparing it to a twenty-four.
Right, right, because, you know, what I was wanting to do is we kind of have a threshold here, now we have a new threshold.
Does everything change after the.
Where that, you know, where we jumped the shark yet, you know, what was, what was the, the change there? And here we can see from going from last year to this year, um, and so professional services, uh, there's a number of things. I T, um, they have, we've really, we've had some new, um, data storage, um, devices that we've installed. We're trying to stay ahead of, um, I've been reading about other cities with ransomware and some other problems and all that. That is not something I wanna ever see us in the news for, so we're gonna look at every means possible to avoid that. And so last year we budgeted for a data, you know, the data storage unit, I forgot what the name of it was, but it's, it's the, the best. They've come out with, yeah, as far as prevention to that, so we're taking every precaution within reasonable means of what we can do to avoid that and, you know, not only that with our practices and policies and. Training and, and all that, but, um, there's just a lot of equipment, you know, the, we've had some routers and that they have a useful life or servers have a useful life and so. This will go up and down just be, mostly because of the replacement schedule, um, and so there's a number of servers that are targeted for replacement for this year. Budget software, um, actually, we, you know, we basically ten thousand dollars is what we've paid for our budget software that we use and it stayed pretty level and. Then the year two thousand and then again this year, and, and I know the person that we've contracted with really well and. You know, we worked out a deal where if we prepay for, you know, for a few years earlier and we did it again this year. We're saving fourteen thousand dollars over an eight-year period and even more important than that, we're looking at a price for the next five years, um, too, so. So I thought that was a good expense for us, is to go there. And then next year we have a residential resident satisfaction survey scheduled, we did one, uh, a number of year, a few years back.
About two, eleven, eighteen.
So. Then employee development, um, we've increased our screenings, um, again, and this is reflective of the fly-in that I mentioned before, um, with, uh, Washington D.C. Um, in this budget, uh, last year we had four hundred thousand dollars in there related to our municipal facilities. And we're actually maybe gonna finish that this year, so that's our hope, you know, this has been a long-term, albatross of a project that. Um, actually, we've got our front counters, um, scheduled starting next week to be, uh, replaced, that we've been waiting for, for a good while. And, uh, we've had the decrease in fuels that I mentioned before. Utilities, you know, again, the, the fuel adjustment for the Winter Storm Yuri, um, that is providing incremental increase to our bills and then. Other is, is a number of our big ticket things that didn't really fit in the other categories, um, leasing, um, capital leases is part of this. So we're showing an increase of six hundred and forty-seven thousand for what we had last year, even though this current year we're not using near all of what we budgeted for, so again, this is. Oh, kind of been working up to where, uh, we haven't really had any expenses yet, so it's kind of, in this all-in-one time, at least for what they're showing us. We have two wayside horns scheduled for replacement, fifty-two thousand dollars each over the next few years and then, um. Our, um, version of office, you know, Microsoft Office is close to end of life and they're forcing us basically to do the, the subscription, the three sixty-five and. We've been trying to hold off at that low as we can, but we're kind of shoot for that for this next year and so that's a fifty thousand dollar, um, ticket. So on the capital side, um, we show ninety-five thousand, um, seventy-five thousand for a replacement of a generator city hall. We, we wore it out over with that federal issue this last year. Um, street department has a sander, spreader and parts department, you know, and I showed you in the, the work session that, you know, our bigger. Equipment that were scheduled looking for a tax note and I'll give you more detail probably in the next budget meeting or two this summer to remind you of that. That we have those scheduled and then basically it's a seven-year maturity note that will issue during this next year, um, to pay for those items. So this, the capital that we're gonna see is for the smaller items, you know, the various mowers and, um, um, sanders and, you know, those type of things that are less cost. So we actually have a, um, increase in our services supplies of five hundred and seventy-five thousand with all this. So it's close to a million dollars increase in our budget, um, so if you look at basically your revenue side, um. Still though, with the good start that we have, we're actually still looking at a forty percent fund balance just from our base budget. Um, so as we look at our supplemental requests, um, we have some, um, resources to work with, but we're mindful, you know, what I've been preaching, you know, looking ahead, we have to be cognizant of that. Um, you're not gonna see as many requests this year, um, but, um, things that we think deserve consideration. With that, you know, show you the list, um.
Again, just, just a question and, and not for this evening's discussion, but I'd love to see, you know, we've got our enterprise expenses coming up. Really start paying those, I'd like to see where the offsets are.
Okay.
Or is that just.
It is, it, it is a sale of assets right there.
Well, but I mean, there should be an offset of expenses, I mean, before we're paying maintenance and maintaining all the equipment and now we're paying leases where we don't do that, so.
That's a good, good point.
We dropped somewhere, we had somewhere, and we know it's going up, but is it truly a six hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand dollar difference? It, it don't, don't.
Yeah, it's, and there's, uh, it's a number of moving parts, but that's a fair question.
It's another discussion.
That's a fair question, so. The supplemental. So, uh, we're gonna go through these, I guess, with each of the departments and, and actually there's two, um, sets we're gonna look at. This is more of our traditional supplemental, you know, the new, like, new programs or, or things not really built in our base budget and. Oftentimes these are one-time expenses, um, there will be some that are recurring, they'll be marked as such if so. And then we also have a list of, um, that Scott put together, uh, based on all our, um, you know, bigger, you know, street. Projects that some of he's been talking with, you know, all over the several meetings and then some others that have been brought to us by residents and. You know, kind of looking down the road, so these are. looking down the road. So these are maybe not something that we're looking to fund this year or even ever, but we certainly want to bring to your awareness and Scott's going to cover those. So with that, we will kind of start with P date and go through the requests.
Yeah, we've got.
Do we want to maybe move this to late? We got five minutes before we have to be in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I ask, can we come back in here for this presentation after workshop or do we have to stay out there?
You want to call Kevin and ask him?
I mean, it's hell of a steeping way.
Yeah.
I don't know if that.
Does it make it more difficult for you and Andrew?
Um, I don't think so.
Also, y'all have a preference for coming back in here for this late or staying in there?
Certainly is easier in here with the bigger screen.
Okay, we'll do that. Probably just leave it up.
Yeah, where we live.
All right. So real quick, clarification. Anybody have anything they need clarified on, on this interaction on tonight's agenda?
None for me.
No? All right. Then we'll close that early work session at 7:27.
Welcome to regular session of Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, July 11th, and the meeting is called to order at 7:35 PM. Let the record show all council members are present, with the exception of council members Feaster and Nelson. Please join Deputy Mayor Protem Brian Fierenza in leading us through the prayer and the pledge.
Please bow your heads. Almighty God and Father, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to serve this great community. We praise you for your blessings upon this community and we ask your Father's blessing upon all the families of the world. Look mercifully on the solitary and the lonely, the weary and the heavy laden, and grant them rest unto their souls. We ask for your blessings on the elderly, the sick, and the financially burdened, to ease their pain and grief and bring joy and happiness into their lives. We ask to keep our whole country, especially those who have been chosen to govern us, in the way of righteousness and peace. God our thoughts and actions tonight, speaking words for peace, humility, understanding and cooperation. Let our actions be an example of leadership for the benefit of all. Father, we ask your intervention with those who have lost loved ones. Bring them peace and comfort. Protect those first responders and all the in public service, keeping them in your protective arms and bring them safely home to their loved ones. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is mayor and council reports on items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. City council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, and information about community events, as well as announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Does anybody have anything they need to report? Me neither. So I do have a proclamation to do. Mr. Lozano, I think you're going to meet me at the podium?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You get the nice blue folder.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Whereas parks and recreations is an integral part of communities and is fundamental to the environmental well-being throughout this country, including Highland Village. And whereas parks and recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, splash pads, pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas parks and park and recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas parks and recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature, now therefore I, Daniel Jaworski, mayor of the city of Highland Village, do hereby recognize the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources and proclaim July 2023 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Highland Village.
Fantastic.
Do you have anything you want to say to add to that?
Yeah, just, this is the first time since I've been here that we've done a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. So it's pretty special to me. And to be recognized like this by the mayor and council.
Just remember, remind my predecessor and my successor, whoever that may be, the same person or different, that remind them of that.
That it was done on your watch. Understood. And thank you again. I appreciate it very much.
Good job.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to item number eight, visitor comments. Anyone wishing to address the city council must complete a speaker's request form and return it to the city secretary. In accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted in discussing or taking action on items not posted on the agenda. Action on your statement can only be taken at a future meeting. In order to expedite the flow of business and to provide all visitors the opportunity to speak, the mayor may impose a three-minute limitation on any person addressing city council. Ms. Miller, do we have anybody sign up? All right, moving on. Number nine, city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens, anything?
Mayor, just a couple of things. First, I want to mention that the scooter committee has met twice to update our scooter ordinance. It was originally approved in 99 and updated in 2012. They'll be bringing some recommendations to us shortly. They are looking at expanding the ordinance to include all micro mobility devices, which would be scooters, e-bikes, and other electric devices like skateboards and hoverboards. They're certainly focusing on safety guidelines and recommendations. And there was a survey that was put out to get some responses from the community, and we received over 900 responses. So that was very, very good. And the group is going to analyze that data, provide, try to provide a consensus of the community's thoughts and desires through that survey. It's also that time to apply for boards and commissions, and you can do that through the city secretary's office or online at highlandvillage.org/volunteer. And they need to be, the applications need to be submitted by July 31st. The Highland Village Road entrance ramp to northbound I-35, we have heard from TexDOT that they are hoping that will be open by July 27th. Again, waiting on a sign and some punch list items to get that going. We'll have two construction projects starting next week. The sanitary sewer line project near Highland Road at Edgewood will begin, and the waterline replacement project, replacing water lines in the Village Estates area will begin as well.
On the scooter thing, you use the term micro.
Mobility.
Mobility.
Micro mobility, yes.
Is that like a new industry term or?
It's either a new industry term or Phil made it up. So.
Let me address that. Actually, probably Councilman Kicks Miller as well, Verstappen as well. But basically, micro mobility is a term that you use that captures all of the different forms of vehicles, electric vehicles that are being manufactured out there from e-bikes, scooters, the one-wheelers that you see out there, and other devices that are coming into the industry. So they just all categorize it at the federal and state level as micro mobility vehicles.
So cars, trucks, and vans, and trains, and planes are all called macro?
Yeah.
Good point. We can take that up.
We have motor cycle, and an e-bike. I've seen them go about the same speed.
Right. We're, that's part of the, of this workshop that we're doing is we're defining parameters on what would be acceptable on trails, sidewalks, and those areas. And some of it is by wattage, maximum speed, things like that. So it's, we're getting into all those details to make it, make it safer, for sure. John, you want to add anything?
No.
Okay.
Looking forward to hearing more.
Awesome.
Thank you. Paul, is that it?
That's it.
All right. So moving on to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and a vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Items on consent this time are number 10, consider approval of minutes from the special city council work session held on June 17th, 2023, and number 11, receive budget reports for the period ending May 31st, 2023. Is there any discussion needed for anything on the consent agenda? Anybody like to make a motion then?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 10 and 11 as read on the consent agenda.
All right. A motion by Mayor Protem Kicks Miller and Mr. Fierenza.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Protem Fierenza. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to action. We did not meet in closed session, so there's nothing to talk about there. Item number 13, conduct a public hearing. I'm sorry.
Do we need to notify them that the continuation of these early work session will be after this meeting?
Oh, yeah. Just as a heads up, we are in our late, late work session that we normally do at the end of the council meeting. We'll be going back into the training room to continue to do it there because it's a continuation of early work session items that we did not finish. So, but moving on, number 13 is conduct a public hearing and consider the first read of ordinance number 2023-1303 amending the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance and zoning map by amending the development and use regulations relating to the signage criteria for the building located on Lot 3R, Block A, the District of Highland Village Commally known as 2570, Justin Road Building Seawell. It used to be known as a district. Now it's called.
The Bowery.
The Bowery. Mr. Kristin.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. December 11, 2012, PD 2012-1 created the district now known as the Bowery. In that PD, there was a signed criteria package that outlined all the signs in that commercial development. development. And a couple of weeks ago, city staff was driving by this site and noticed that they were removing, or they had removed, one of the wall signs, the Dr. Pepper sign. I don't know if everybody remembers what that was or where it was. And they were in the process of installing a new sign, so we reminded them that they had to do the proper procedure to remove the sign and replace the wall sign, which required planning and zoning and a public hearing, since it's an ordinance change. So we have received an application for the ordinance change, or for the sign package change. We worked it with planning and zoning on June 20th, and it was moved to move forward with an approval vote of four to one, one against. The against was, our understanding is, in the new mural painting, they are desiring to have all the high schools represented, that's kind of on the west side of I-35, LISD, Denton, and Argyle High Schools represented in this mural. And the planning and zoning member wanted to just retain the possibility of having just Highland Village schools represented.
You know what? I agree with that.
So with that, the city attorney has drafted an ordinance to amend Section 2 of the PD, Exhibit E and Exhibit E10, and I believe you have pictures of that showing the old Dr. Pepper sign, and then the new Bowery Park sign that they want to paint on there for your consideration. I do have Jenny McCorkle here. She is with Cobalt Investments if you have specific questions, but at this time I would recommend opening the public hearing.
Cobalt Investments is involved in-
Yes, so the Cobalt Management Services, the property manager-
Oh, okay, okay.
-for Bowery, and we also, I'm on the ownership side as well.
Okay, all right. So I guess I need to open a public meeting first, right? Angie?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
You can let them present and then I'll-
Okay, we'll do that then. So, anything further?
Sure, so the idea here, my name is Jenny McCorkle. I'm with Cobalt Investment Company. The idea here was just to foster community engagement with the sign. Just, this is right across from Awesome Times. It's on an interior wall in the property. We all know there's kind of Instagram moments, you know, going on, and we just wanted to really just have the community engage more with the property. The Dr. Pepper was a little tired and old and fading, so we wanted to update it.
Public hearing now? Okay, so I'll open the public hearing. Was anybody, did anybody sign up to speak for the public hearings? Anybody want to? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
Awesome, thank you.
We'll take any additional questions you may have.
Kind of along the lines of P&amp;Z, why not just the Highland Village area schools?
Sure.
And it's not a hill I'm going to die on, but I sure, I would be okay with Argyle and Guyer, but we could get rid of Louisville and maybe Farm Mound.
You know, it was about who was coming to shop at the shopping center, who's engaging with our tenants. You know, Awesome Times has got a great local following, kids are coming from local schools to play games at nearby fields. So really, your draw to the shopping center is and needs to be a little bigger than just Highland Village to support those businesses. So we wanted to be as inclusive as possible without, you know, not DISD, but people that are coming and supporting our businesses, we wanted to support.
That makes sense, yeah. How long, I know it was started several months ago, how long, how close to completion once this is approved and the artist can get back out and start painting?
Oh, I think just a day or two.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a big deal. They just need to add logos and put in some touch-ups and it'll, it should be done. I don't know what her timeline will be for scheduling those couple of days, but I wouldn't expect much longer than that.
All right.
Are there any other schools that you eliminated already that you would like to add? Because I see you've got empty balloons.
You know, no, we didn't want to overcrowd it either. There was quite a bit of debate in the office about the balance of schools versus leaving some blank canvas there. We wanted it to be visible, and so just tried to stick with some of the bigger major schools. We have a Highland Village former resident in our office, so he helped us opine a little bit, so I'll slap him on the hand some for including LISD.
I like it.
Is there any reason, I mean, would the artist be willing to maybe, the school logos correspond to the actual, like the Marcus one, instead of in the pink balloon, put it in a red balloon and-
Sure.
Flower mounds in a blue one, that kind of thing?
Yes, although you might want it to pop out a little bit. I don't know, I'm not an artist, but absolutely, we're willing to consider your-
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion.
So you know what, a great compromise is the Louisville balloon is the smallest one? I'm okay with that.
If I set Marcus just a little bit more-
Yeah, maybe a little better, maybe put an ax inside the Marcus one?
Oh, that'd be better.
Just a little ax.
Do you have any background or statistical information that will achieve the goal that you're after?
As far as engagement on-
Community engagement, that was the idea of redesigning this and painting it.
You know, we have had it work in other shopping centers. Obviously, it works in a lot of your bigger legacy West-type shopping centers. It's always a gamble until you do it and you see how it works. I think it'll work very well with Awesome Times, who has a lot of those Instagram moments in and of themselves, and they do kind of a seasonal Instagram format within the restaurants. So I think you're catering to that community, but it's, it would be hard to quantify that.
I missed it when McAllisters took all of their local paraphernalia out of McAllisters in the remodel. It made it from Highland Village into sterile.
Yeah.
I still love their food, but they made it sterile.
Bowery Park is a very local shopping center with local operators and mom and pop, you know, tenants that are, that live, and their kids go to those schools, and so we really want to celebrate it for being what it is.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that too.
Being on the selfish side, because we are in Highland Village, there is a school about 100 yards away from that, which is Briar Hill. Is there any way, we're splitting a little bit of time between all these schools or a little bit of wall space between all these schools, would there be any way to add the extra Highland Village schools that are here, which is our elementarys and our middle, to this group along with keeping it with the Guyer/Argyle and engaging the other communities around?
I certainly think so. I don't see why not.
I mean, there's four of them.
Yeah.
And those kids are all over the Bowery every day.
Yes, yes. I believe we were going for a certain age range, really, just it was more because of the size of school by count, but we can certainly add some more. I don't-
Part of what you're doing too is the feeder patterns, the high schools, you know, all those schools, you know, the kids that are competing at unity, they feed into those different high schools too, so I think that was part of that logic, I'm sure.
Yes, absolutely. They're all going-
Simplistically, though, they are the schools in our community, and they're not represented at all. So I would prefer to have the local schools in there represented as well.
Yeah.
And the shorter, like elementary, so they can like point, you know, like the littles shorter and then move up so it's higher for the high schools? Because, I mean, I got 13 and a 10-year-old, and I mean, if they saw their school logo somewhere, they'd be all excited.
We're happy to add some additional schools, absolutely.
And it's parents and grandparents that bring the little ones in.
Yep. This is absolutely for the community, so.
Okay, good.
That's not, no objection there.
All right. Well, there's three elementary and one middle, so you've got four balloons at least left, so.
Good.
But you can keep Louisville in the small one.
Yeah.
Put them on the bottom in that little light blue one.
Oh, yeah, that's even better. I like that.
I don't mind it being in, you know, a maroon one, just way out on the edge there, away from everybody. That's fine.
You know, you came on a light agenda night.
And I'm a Marcus High School Hall of Famer, so I'm a little prejudiced, so.
We need to, we certainly want to represent in the community.
I went to Marcus, too.
I wish I could draw a new site plan for you guys, I'm not talented, though, so can't do that tonight.
Here you've got Highland Village Elementary, got McAuliffe represented with grandkids.
Briar Hill.
Briar Hill, Marcus.
Marcus, went to Marcus.
Yeah, so, all right, good.
Yeah, absolutely.
We thank you. Anybody have anything else, any other questions or comments?
No.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
I will make a motion that we, make sure I say this right. Make a motion that we approve item number 13, or item number 13, conduct a public, or 2023-1303, amending the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance of zoning map by amending the development of use regulations relating to signage criteria for the building located on Lot 3R, Block A, the District of the Highland Village, commonly known as 2570 Justin Road Building C, also known as the Bowery.
Do you want to add the recommendation?
With the recommendation of adding all three Highland Village Elementary schools and our middle school into that group.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Cox. I think it's your first motion.
First motion.
Anybody care?
I will second the motion.
A second by Mrs. Hurst. Any further comment or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. See, moving on, number 14, consider resolution 2023-3076, authorizing a contract for construction services with Sea Greenscaping LP for the First Responders Monument Project. Mr. Lozano. I guess you're yielding.
Yes, actually. I'm actually going to have Deputy Director Brian Norton present the gender briefing.
Okay. Mr. Norton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to be here tonight. Just to give you a little background on this item, the park amenity station next to the municipal center here, just outside the police station, it needs to be updated with new landscape and some amenities, and also that would be as part of a First Responders Monument Project. And that project would include the installation of the monument, new landscape and lighting, installation of new side amenities to include picnic tables, new benches, trash receptacles, and also as part of this project, it would include the expansion of the Veterans Memorial also on this site. That area needs to be expanded so that we can have more room to add more nameplates as we continue to do that through the years. So the city would like to install this monument to honor our first responders, to include the police department, fire, and dispatch personnel. And as I said, the expansion of the Veterans Memorial. The next step in this project would be to award a construction contract, and plans and specifications were prepared by the McAdams Group, and we have already solicited bids. We had competitive sealed bid process, and city administration has determined that Sea Greenscaping had the lowest most responsible bid, and that was for the amount of $111,598.40. And that project would be funded through the city manager's contingency fund. So what we're asking for tonight is a recommendation from council to consider resolution 2023-3076, authorizing a contract for construction service with Sea Greenscaping LP for this project.
Questions, comments? I'll just, I'll clarify, this is a project that when I took office, I came to staff, to Paul and Phil, and talked to both the chiefs. It was an idea that I had, and the concept is identical to the Veterans Monument in that you would have name plaques where if you had a resident that lived in Highland Village, served as a police, fire, or dispatcher either in Highland Village or somewhere else, but lived in Highland Village for at least a year, just like the Veterans Monument, they could be nominated, you know, an application submitted by a resident or by their family or whomever, and, you know, each year, whether it's once or twice a year that we do it, you know, it doesn't really make any difference to me, and they do the installation just like we do the Veterans one. I came and spoke with them, they all thought it was an idea worth taking a look at, a deep dive at. So over the course of the last year, they've had some conversations with McAdams. McAdams, you know, provided some preliminary ideas, discussions, and then even some design, I think, that you see in the packet, and did so at a really good, I mean, they gave us a really good hometown discount that kept all that stuff very economical and responsible. And so now they're bringing it, you know, for us to take a look at. So that's kind of where this has all originated and where it's gone. So I know, John, I know you've got some comments that you want to make along the lines of how we got to where we are, so I wanted to outline that.
Well, I'll defer to-
I would prefer you go ahead and give that information, so, because it may not, it may require me not to ask the question, which I'm going to do anyway, so if you explain it, then.
I mean, I've got questions, okay, and I express some to the city manager that was aware that this was brought up almost a year ago, okay, you know, just a suggestion, asking the park department to investigate it. Then the next thing that we hear as a council is wanting to award a bid, and there's been nothing official in that year. I've heard nothing. It's not been on a city manager update, it's not been any budget items, I went to the park budget, okay? Unfortunately, I missed city manager's budget, so we haven't heard anything for a year. Okay, so that's question number one. Number two, I've heard a little bit that we needed to expand the veterans memorial, but again, that was, you know, just during one of the meetings, or not meetings, but one of the recognition events. Number three, looking at this, you know, I've got to wonder, you know, the veterans was put together by a group of citizens. The group of citizens came together and said, here's what we would like, here's how we'd like to do it, here's how we would like to administer it. Okay, I've got questions on how that happens. How do you, you know, again, notwithstanding what, you know, the mayor just said, but I think it's got to be a little more formal than just, we're going to figure it out as we go on how you put a name on a plaque of recognition, okay? I mean, I think veterans is pretty straightforward on how that was done. I get the model, okay? I don't understand the process now. So I've got concerns about approving something, plus to your point, you know, good drawings, I haven't seen a drawing, I haven't seen a plan. There was nothing in the documentation showing that, okay? And then the other concern I had is, you know, on the earlier budget meeting this evening, we saw that the city manager's office was going to be running a spending, overspending what the projected budget was, and one line item was this, okay, which presumed, you know, automatic approval of the budget. So I've got concerns, okay, that we need to talk it through, get the other council input, okay, and then decide, you know, is tonight the night we vote on it, okay, or is tonight the night we put it up with the other items that are on supplementary budget requests that are not funded, and see which one stacks up for the money? Maybe they all do, but those are my concerns, okay? And I'd say that number one is not hearing about it until tonight, going through this full process, RFP, okay, bids, 80-page document that was created by someone, okay, and then coming to us for the first time. That is a great concern, okay? I'd say number two on that list is what is the official process, okay? What would be the document that says this first responder deserves a place on this recognition within Highland Village, okay? It's got to be something, it's got to be, it's got to be documented clearly so everyone understands what it is, okay? Not debating the whys and wherefore's, but how, okay? To make it, make it a monument as opposed to recognition. So that's, those are my comments.
And to follow up with that, I'm looking, as you said earlier, I'm looking for the design program. What is it going to look like? How much more additional space are we looking at taking back here? Which direction is it going? Which direction is it going? And what format? Where are we putting tables, things like that? But there was no design for us to consider. So that was, my questions revolve around...
I think that is in the packet, correct?
There are some renderings in the packet, not, not the full document.
No drawing in the packet.
There should be one set of drawings, black and white. There's not, okay.
They didn't make it.
Not in the, not in the, here, no.
All right. So let me respond. John, Councilman Kix Miller, appreciate your, your questions. And it's just one of those things that just got missed and fell by the wayside, especially the way that it was generating momentum. When, you know, mayor or councilperson comes to you and has a, has a project that they want to do, we, we pretty much move expeditiously. We move quickly on it. And we have a proven track record of doing that and, and doing it very effectively and with excellence. In this situation, there was just, the level of communication just wasn't there that needed to be there. So I apologize for that. I'll take the, the hit on that for sure. But we've been, like, like I said, during the process, we've, we've, we're modeling what the veterans have as far as plates, as far as the approval process we've got with marketing. And we're going to, we're going to follow that same criteria that they use to, to put a veteran onto the Veterans Monument. Chief, both chiefs were involved in the process. There was quite a few work sessions, including the mayor and city manager in it. So it's more of, we're doing a, a repeat of what's already successful and it has proven success for the, for the Veterans Monument. We'd be doing the same thing for the first responders.
The, the one thing I didn't mention that I, that I should, that distinguishes this idea from anything else, but it is similar to our Veterans Monument, is that, you know, if you go in, in any other city in, around us, and you even go to the county, they all have a first responders monument of some kind, right?
Yes.
Just about every city does, except us. But theirs are all very generic. It's just a first responder's mon, it's a statue of a firefighter or a police officer or something like that. What makes ours different is we are honoring individuals specifically, like we do on our Veterans Monument. And there is nobody that does that. And that was the idea that I, that I really wanted to bring forward. I wanted us to do something for first responders because we're one of the few communities that, that has not at some point. And then, secondly, I liked the way we do the Veterans Monument. And, and I thought from a policy perspective, following that same process was keeping it simple and repeatable and, and easy, easy to work with.
And the monument footprint, we're using the existing footprint and existing beds. Where you're going to see improvements or, or changes is taking some of the bed space and putting the mon, the three stones in there. We're changing the, the site furnishings to match what our standard is throughout the city. And then we're adding the Ballard lights that you see and at Braz's football field throughout that monument area. I believe there's three additional lights that would go in there. There's going to be some irrigation upgrades to make it more efficient and more robust plant material. So the, the footprint will, as it's designed now, there's not going to be any changes to it. The footpath and the beds, things like that.
And specifically, it's the area right outside PD, where the, the little circle area where the big tree sits in the middle. It's that area right there.
Yeah, and I apologize that that rendering didn't make it, make it to your packet because it, it shows the, the layout of where things are.
In, in addition, I think it'd be important for us to see, we've given, we've been given the, the financial impact for the development of the, of the monument and the improvements. If we're following the same process that we use for the veterans, are we going to then have also a separate presentation and celebration of those first responders? And what financial impact is that going to have on, to our budget? I know it's going to be nominal because it's a small, it's a small piece, but it is going to have an impact. And I think it's important for us to see what the anticipated impact would be on an annual basis.
So I'll defer to you in a second. What I, what, what my, the vision I said was doing something around September 11th each year. So like a Saturday or something, you know, that is in close proximity to September 11th, since that's a, a recognized first responder day in our country. A ceremony, you know, around that date. I, I know there's also a, a date in the spring for, is it National Police Chief? In May? I don't know if, if that corresponds with anything with fire department or not. So if we wanted to do two, that would, that would be another sensible date as far as the cost goes for the ceremony itself. I don't think there is a cost to the ceremony. And, and, you know, it's usually a sponsor that is putting up the cost for the plaque itself and the installation of the plaque. So the city doesn't incur that.
On this, we would, we would more than likely incur the cost of the plaque, which is, and getting it engraved, which is not very much at all. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
I mean, currently, the plaques are funded by the nominees.
Or the sponsor, whoever.
Yeah, the sponsors do it. So would it be the same process going forward?
It, it's going to mirror the veterans. That's the, that's the whole goal. That's, that's proven to be successful. So I misspoke on that, so it'd be, it'd be sponsored.
So the veterans process is, we have a, we have a group of, of, I think, three or four veterans, correct? And then the city manager, the city manager, the mayor, and, and then I think Lori is part of that committee as well, vet the applications. It's, you know, the vetting process, it's, you know, as long as they honorably served and lived in the city for, I think it's a year, then they're eligible. And typically, you know, we install the same number of people that we get applications for each year, if I'm not mistaken. So in this, I could envision, you know, the, the chief, the, the two chiefs, the city manager, you know, the mayor, and, and maybe Lori as a, as a, as a similar committee looking through those applications. And we could set a number, you know, we're no more than six every year, or, you know, whatever. But I think, I think, I think there's two, you know, I respect what you're saying about that, the process, the installation process. But I, I don't think we have to, I don't think we have to settle that tonight. I think that's a process that between now and the time that the monument were to be constructed, we could iron that out. And I think it would be, be pretty easy to, to settle that. But the monument itself, you know, I, I think they're two separate issues that...
I know we're going to be looking for resolution. I think we're premature. I would like to see that documented ahead of time so we understand what the process is. So when we make an announcement, they'll say, well, this is what we're putting in place, and here's what it's going to entail. Here's what it's going to mean. Here's how it's going to recognize the people that work in our city who have worked in our city. Okay? And this is the criteria to get there. I think that needs to be part of it. I mean, if, if we've spent this much time documenting and putting out a bid process and design, I think that little extra step to get that process down, okay? How many citizens do we need? You know, is the chief going to be, the, the two chiefs be on it? Okay, I think that needs to be documented, okay? That needs to go beyond. Whether we pull the trigger tonight, whether there's no gating factor on that, okay? We're not going to lose the money that we've got. We're also going through supplemental budgets, okay? So I think there's a few moving parts that says, let's not rush through this. Now, that's my opinion, okay? I hadn't thought about what other cities, I mean, I like, you know, there's no question about recognizing. It's just a matter of question, process, getting the process that we're comfortable with, okay? And I did tell the mayor earlier, you know, this, I said, had we talked about this all along, okay? Maybe not just come tonight with a vote for spending $111,000. We're in the middle of a budget and we're going to have a budget deficit next year already. You know, be an easier sell, okay? And I'm not going to say I would vote against it with the other information. The other thing I would like to have is I'd like to see a drawing of it, okay? I mean, I see mayor's got a pretty one here. I don't have it. And then the last thing is maybe Councilman Nelson and Councilman Feaster would like to be part of it, make a vote on that. I know we've got, so.
So the only thing I'll, I'll say in conclusion, you know, from my perspective, is this is something, you know, I, I talked a little bit about it at the end of the campaign when I ran for mayor. It's something I have talked about extensively to, to members of the, of the community throughout this last year. The reception I've gotten from members of the community has been very positive, talking about both the monument itself as well as the process. It's been very positive. So it's, it's not like it's a big secret. You know, there hasn't been any press about it, I'll, I'll say that. But, but I, I think, you know, I, my desire was to have something like this ready to go this, this fall. I don't know if that timeline is still even feasible. Is that something, you have any ideas about?
Yeah, I think it's about a 45-day project. And we certainly can get the, the process nailed down between, between now and the next council meeting. I don't see that being an issue. Just have to get with the chiefs and Lori and city manager. And we get that documented. And then we can, I can share the plans with council tomorrow and, and send you them. And then if you have any questions, you can respond to me individually. And then I'll also bring some clips in the next council meeting for the project of the plans so that it's, it's viewable for, for the public.
I mean, I read the 80 pages, okay? And got lost in a lot of it as far as what was going to be transplanted, what was going to be moved, and what kind of stone was going to be there. You know, I thought of one where Lori said that, you know, it's a challenge getting more monument stones like we have out there.
Right.
You know, that match them. And so those are questions. Maybe the drawing shows that they, they all do match or how they blend. Yeah, let's, I, I get it trying to face for the date, but I would rather, you know, if we're going to put something up that's going to be there, you know, as long as the current monument's been and we plan on it, then let's, let's not rush it through, okay? To meet, to meet an artificial date, okay? Because we know, may not make it anyway.
So at that, any other questions or comments before anybody would like to make some kind of a motion? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a, a motion that we table Resolution 2023-3076 to allow time for additional information to be brought forward to council for review.
So I know Kevin's not here, so I'm going to defer to, hopefully you can answer this, Paul. In making a motion to table, I know that in past conversations about tabling things, it's typically been described as more of a way to kill. So can we, can we put something in the motion that says tabling to the next agenda?
I think that'd be fine because based on what we've discussed, it would be easy to get that information together. In fact, we could get it out prior and then have everything ready for the next meeting. So if you wanted to include that in the motion for the next meeting, we could certainly do that.
I don't think, I don't think you want to vote no.
I'm not, I'm not going to vote no.
No, no, but I mean, I don't think you want a council to vote no, and I don't...
I don't think anybody on this council wants to vote no either, but I would hope they wouldn't.
But tonight, you may not get...
I will, I'm, I'm happy to amend the motion to table to a certain date, which would be the July 25th.
25th.
25th meeting to allow for additional information on, on the presentation, the plans, et cetera, as we discussed.
Okay, so before a second, I'll clear, I'll make sure, let me repeat back your motion. So Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Fieran just made a motion to table agenda item number 14 to the July 25th council meeting in order to allow staff to provide, to bring forward more information so the council can make a more informed decision.
With a full presentation, yes.
Full presentation, okay.
I second that.
And a second by Mayor Pro...
That was date specific for the next...
Yes, yes. Second by Mayor Pro Tim Kix Miller. Any discussion about the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, nay. Motion carries 4-1. All right. That concludes our action agenda moving into late work session. Before, before we excuse ourselves back to the training room to conclude the supplemental budget conversation, is, are there any other status reports or current projects or discussion on future agenda items anybody would like to bring forward? Ms. Hurst?
I would...
You need to, you need to use your switch instead of raising your hand.
I'm getting used to it. There, see, I pushed the button, but it doesn't feel like it moves.
It didn't, it didn't. Your light didn't come on, so you can't talk.
Oh, there we go, it goes to the side.
There you go.
Sorry. No, I would like to have a discussion brought up to look at having a hotel occupancy tax, or transient occupancy tax, and looking at harnessing decker technologies to start collecting tax and fee revenue for all of our short-term rentals. We're allowed that per state code. I would also like to look at possibly setting up a Vision Zero-type program like Denton comes has, that the goal is to bring it down to zero fatalities for pedestrians, bikes, scooters, and cars in the area. Because scooters have come up, 2499s come up. And so I would like that to look, to look into.
Did you get that?
I did. And I will mention, Councilman Hurst had sent me an email regarding short-term rentals. And I'm putting some of that information together and I'll forward that to everyone that could kind of feed into that conversation. So we'll get that out shortly.
And lastly, I know Dan would love this. FloMo, they released today, Amazon was Prime Day today. And what did they release today? An online store. Where's ours? I would like to discuss that in a future addenda. We cannot let Derek beat us.
A city, a city-sponsored online, Amazon online store?
No, it's, it's through Amazon and it's online FloMo stuff.
Oh, that was, I saw that post.
And they released it. So I'd like to put that on the agenda. I think the mayor would, would like that too.
Maybe we could do something in conjunction with Sales Tax Holiday? Partner with Precision Branding, perhaps?
Just saying. That's it.
Anybody else? Okay, with that, we will close the action, the, what do we call this? The regular, the regular works, regular meeting of city council and move back into late work session in the training room.
Items to move, uh Travis knows all the items that would be that have been recommended already to move in the vest.
Recommended right now, it's uh the magazines with the pistol, OC spray and handcuffs. Uh with these new vests then we have options to start putting more if we want to in the future.
You could even at some point you could even include your cuffs in the vest too, right?
Cuffs, radio, tourniquets, first aid kits.
So you can lessen that that load here by I mean each officer could customize what works for them.
Correct.
And lessen the load on your belt.
Correct. I have to replace the vest no matter what, so the outer carriers is the is the additional cost.
Are those two different kinds?
Those are just pictures to for yes, they are, they're just to represent concepts and where we were leaning when we finish this project out. As you can see that, I mean. Most people don't know he's wearing an outer vest. And just unless you really understand that concept.
But he only has one on.
One one.
The vest.
You have one vest on.
Right.
Oh, a different vest.
You don't have an inner vest like I'm in here.
Is it?
No, 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 this the outer vest is just I mean it's just what he said about comfortability, um like when we're at the PD doing a report or something, we can take this off instead of.
Okay.
You know, taking all our shirt, if you have a vest inside, we'd have to take off our shirt and take off the vest and everything like that, but it's also. Putting stuff on your vest is way better for our back and our hips, like you said, I mean longevity, I mean I'm only twenty six and my back hurts, so you know.
That's from carrying everybody in your shift.
In a way that's designed and I mean it almost looks like the uniform blouse.
Exactly.
Which is which is why you're saying so you can't some people can't.
The history in the Island Village, I'll say it was used to be a pretty big deal to not go to that param that real military look, the SWAT looks. When you put the black letters, the white white the white letters across then you start putting all of this stuff on it. It looks like you're ready to go into war, so we're still trying to provide the comfort without that look.
I think it looks really professional.
Mm hmm.
And have can we ask questions?
Sure.
I mean, have you guys been test driving these? What what is your is that your favorite one?
Sure.
Like.
The company that we're with right now is Angel Armor. Uh yeah, I get what you know, the chief telling you what they selected in the past, I would still really prefer to use guys. Um it's expensive, it's probably the most expensive vest out there for a lot of different reasons because of the comfort, because of the weight. The durability, the ability to put in uh uh plates. The plates are a huge deal to have front and back plates on them, so in in back up to about two or five years ago. We were carrying another vest in our cars and more plates in our cars, helmets in the cars for the. You know, the horrible situation that we might encounter where these new vests offer all of those options right up front.
So we if we but those things have to be replaced too, correct? The extra plates and all that stuff.
That's all part of this package.
Okay, but if you went with this, that that extra cost somewhat outweighs replacing all the duplicates?
We're not we're not duplicating any effort.
No. Okay.
My vests are expiring this year, uh twenty of them are expiring, so about and we're gonna budget for for a few new officers over the next year. Also who come in, so we have those things on, but we can buy them, we wouldn't buy them without them being. All these go away, his uh Donovan came on within the last two years, so his is good for another three years. So he's not part of that new package deal, sorry.
What expires in a vest?
Thank you. Somebody said to the government and somebody said after wear test, somebody said these things expire after five years, so.
Is that a car seat?
I think they break down, I mean the the older ones especially, the the older material with the sweating, with the rubbing, with the all of the. Washing, all of those things, they just they weren't back at that, they weren't rated at that hundred percent level. And 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 you can ask all the questions you want, cause I've asked too and there's really not a good answer other than that somebody in some standard.
Okay, okay.
Model said they expire. How is it, how does this four hundred four year, three hundred sixty four day different than the five year, one day different?
Cause you're not the manufacturer who came up with that.
Correct, it's it's a litigation thing, it's just baby car seats, they expire after five years.
It's now changed to ten, by the way.
We have a few people who are lobbying to try to change that and say, come on, this is this is this is killing us, I mean killing citizens, killing everything now we. Conversely, we say definitely wouldn't want to be the pioneer curve, we didn't change a vest out that was expired. We had a serious shooting.
I can see where it would be a risk with the annual improvement in. The ammunition and the power behind the ammunition. The vest would expire from a safety rating standpoint, I can see that piece. Um I didn't think about it from the wear and tear, obviously there's gonna be some breakdown in them, so.
I think your biggest breakdown, cause we're we wear the same stuff, but they're different is sunlight. Cause it's Kevlar and sunlight breaks the Kevlar down. So every time they're out out and about, that's why we store like our gears, when our gears, our guys are off duty, their their gear is in a dark room. It's because sunlight breaks the Kevlar down more than anything.
So Jason, I think you're included in this package, so so Jason.
I mean, it's back to my mine expires too.
He carries a peace officer license in the state of Texas based on his position, nobody else right now in the fire in the fire department. And he gets outfitted with, yes, keep the same licensing requirements as we do. He's got a rifle, he's got a vest, all of those things in case he has to.
So are you as good a you as good a shot as he is on range?
He's worse.
I'm worse. You work on that.
Okay, so this one's a little, I thought didn't think that one would be so lengthy, but Travis here is going to talk about.
We cut down the slide presentation quite a bit, so.
But you can ask as many questions as you want, cause it's very, very, very interesting on soul.
There we go, so we're talking about red dot sights, what are they? That is gonna be those little box on the top, little mailbox looking thing on big square, that's a laser, that is our red dots. So there are sighting system attached to the top of pistols. It is not a laser, there was some confusion before, it's not like this laser pointer where it's gonna put a red dot on somebody, it's just the sighting system, so you'll have a red dot. And like a like a almost like a scope for your pistol, but it doesn't do any magnification.
I'm gonna take Tim a little, cause we cut a slot slides down, but our rifles right now have a similar sighting system, so when we zero in on a target on a hundred yards. We can see the dot, but nobody else can see it.
Um it's not super new technology, it's been around since the nineteen seventies, uh but in two thousand and seven, that's when I really started seeing um like more military combat. On pistols. And they're just becoming the standard for pistol shooting and on sighting systems. The side in science, y'all have heard of Fight or Flight by Dr. Walter Cannon, um basically your eyes under stress, your pupils dilate. Um which makes it your lose you lose in your sight vision, um and you gain our sight vision. So when you're trying to focus on a front sight post on a pistol or your sights, when you're in high stress situations and your vision narrows, you're not gonna pick up those sights. Um also it goes into one focal plane versus three, and we'll kinda talk about that on the next slide, what that exactly means. Um increases positional shooting ability, um so with iron sights, you gotta be directly behind the iron sights, line up the rear and front sight perfectly to get accurate hits on target. With the red dot sight, you can just put the dot on it from any angle and it's gonna put the round where your dot's at.
Oh, there you go.
Uh oh, your time is up.
So you didn't pay the bill.
There we go. A little fact, fifty percent of officer involved shootings are one handed. Um so it's not a perfect scenario where they get the square up to a target and pressed out and they have a perfect shooting platform. They're running forward or backwards or they're getting out of patrol car and it's one handed, so you just gotta put that dot on whatever your target is gonna do. So we talked about your vision, so it also helps with reduced vision, could not have a nice bright red dot that I'm putting on and not two little dark sights. And Chief talked about already, one sighting uh solution across all our weapon systems, so the rifle has a red dot and then in this proposal, our pistol will have a red dot too. So all of our lethal weapons weapon systems will have a red dot um. As our sighting system, so it's the same across the board. Uh threat focused versus sight focused, historically with iron sights, you were looking at your front sight posts, your focus is your main focus. Your rear sight's a little blurry and your target's a little blurry, which is kinda like weird, why would you wanna blurry target? Um that's just how the iron sights are you're training to shoot. Uh with a red dot, you wanna clear focused target, so it's extremely clear, uh and you just superimpose that red dot on the target. So you're not actually looking through the two, your eyes just naturally kinda just pick it up, the science behind it and you can see the red dot on the target. And we have two sighting systems on a pistol now, we'll still have backup iron sights along with the other red dot. So if there's any type of malfunction um on the red dot, then you still have a secondary set of um sights. And then increased accuracy in low light conditions, again, when you're in low light and you have a nice red dot, you can pick up instead of trying to line up um your iron sights. Focal planes, briefly talked about it, so there should be like three focal planes, so your rear sight, your front sight, and then your target, you're looking at three different positions. Uh three different small distances, for one focal plane, you're looking at your target and then you're just superimposing the red dots, you're not even focused on the red dot. Focus on the target and just kinda super imposes that dot. Other agencies that use them, um so before specialized teams are the only one issued these, uh like your SWAT teams or special forces guys. They've proven so reliable, their cost has gone down, um that more patrol officers getting equipped with them. So these are some of the current surrounding agencies, um every city that touches us is implementing some type of red dot program if they don't have one. Um with this sighting system, this is our current pistol, I can pull it out, but I'm wearing it on my hip here, there is uh no way to attach a red dot optic onto these pistols. So with this proposal and that number you saw um previously, it was uh that is to replace these current pistols with new pistols and add an optic on to them, our red dot.
How many pistols would that replace?
We have thirty nine currently entering the door, so that'd be a a swap, thirty nine for them.
And that's currently on the officers as well as backup?
Correct, that's uh some spares just in case, if there one goes down or we have a major malfunction, they can get another pistol. Uh officers get into an officer involved shooting, thank goodness we haven't had any, um that uh. They take the DPS will take the pistol and so now you have to equip elsewhere than the pistol.
See what's been to work with and.
Exactly.
And the uh the optic itself is was a uh internal battery or how's that?
Correct, so it's like a little watch battery, um depending on the make and model, it can last up to five years.
The battery?
The battery, yes.
So there's not gonna be an an issue in the field?
Correct, there shouldn't be for for a battery unless there was some other malfunction.
We don't have a pol- you don't have a policy for frequent testing of the batter of this?
Change them out yearly.
Yeah, we change out the battery yearly, but every day the officer, like when we take our rifles to the car, we check to make our red dots are still on, they still work, so.
What's our normal rotation for replacing pistols?
Batteries?
No pistols.
Pistols, um.
Okay, so there's there's not been a normal, uh the first ones that I replaced, they were of like seventeen years old. And then these ones that we're currently using, the SIGs are probably six at six years yearly, not right now. We get about three hundred and thirty five dollars on a trade for these towards that new package. So we're upgrading with newer technologies, safer safer environment, um it's it's a I you know, it's expensive price tag, but. When it comes down to that moment, do you want the best or not, so we've kicked this can around um hard this year and uh. And that's why we're presenting it to you.
Is that your net of what we'll sell those for?
Yes, so that is including uh about three hundred and twenty.
The trade in, correct.
I'm assuming then we have to replace all of the holsters as well.
That price also includes the holsters, so everything, that's the whole weapon system, that's what that price would include, it's the holsters, uh the pistol and everything.
If we need to save one, I I'll volunteer not to take them.
This is one of the optics that we're T and E and there's a couple that we're kinda throwing around, um these are the ones we're looking at. Um since we're carrying SIGs, uh we're trying to look at SIG optics right now, um it come a long way in their optics and they're now tested, if you wanna put it that way, um.
I'm gonna jump in quick too, he's gonna show you another package and why we're doing that is we price this out at the most expensive package. Just like our vests, we have uh these companies bring stuff in and allow us to test them out and try them in hand and go out to the range and let everybody try them. So I would never implement something without doing that. If it was approved, we're gonna we're gonna buy the best or whichever they chose is gonna be the best product, not just because it was approved to say, oh, we like SIGs the most. Doesn't that's not only do business.
So this is another optic made by SIG, uh well, we're gonna be T and E in pretty soon, we're just waiting for them to send them out. Uh with we don't adopt MR uh MRDS program, officers losing edge when it's in when in a gunfight, one second can make a difference between winning and losing that fight. Officers are radiated disadvantage when it comes to use of force, as you can see, we have ninety five percent of the time, uh the suspect fires at us first. Um so we need as quick as we can to get an accurate sight picture in rounds downrange, um to be able to check ourselves but also the public. Lack of confidence at longer shots, I don't know if y'all are familiar with pistol shooting or not, but when you start getting up past twenty five yards, things get a little more dicey. Uh with this red dot, um I was able to hit it fifty yards, no problem, um and went to our last qualification day. Fast sight, good sight picture, almost doubling our our range, effective range with those pistols. Um and if you look at some of our schools, we got callways up to like sixty five, seventy yards.
So I'm interested in 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 knowing um when you're when you go to the field to test. You're in a relaxed environment essentially, right? You have time to post, you have time to sight, you have you have all the time in the world. Do you also do the training in high stress situation to get that same type of accuracy and what are the results?
We don't have a set T and E type program where we're putting the paces, we're just gonna go out and run at them and shoot them. Um first like force on force where we're actually having people come at us or something like that, we're getting to more high stress situations. Um we do a little bit of that, but most of it getting point from other people that are doing that data. Um and they're seeing a, I don't have an exact percentage for you, but it highly increased uh hits on target and for officers to actually look at their sights. Uh when they're pulling the officers after the involve officer involved shooting, a lot of them are saying, I'm not even using my sights, but our traditional iron sights, cause they're so hard to pick up. Um and then people like, well, how many people are actually looking for them, and they said, we're actually looking for a sight picture, cause when you start shooting and nothing happens to the bad guy shooting that. Then they need to focus on my sight, but this their vision's blurry, um then they start training people with the red dot sights. Um you're getting less rounds, having officer having to shoot less rounds, um and then it's more accurate hits on target. And those are in high stress situations, um in the field, but also in like a a training environment where they have to stress them. And they're doing a just force on force in the.
Thank you.
In the older days, my time, the the typical gunfight was three bad guys, three feet, three rounds, that's the way we trained. So you really didn't have a lot of time to aim even one handed, the 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 gunfights now are getting longer. I wouldn't even, we don't even train past twenty five yards on a on a range with pistols, if it was more than twenty five. You're just gonna go, if you've ever shot a gun, you're gonna go, that's a hell of a good shot at that distance already. And you hit a hit a target at fifty yards away now with a with a handgun, that's amazing technology, so just food for thought for that.
Did y'all did y'all, did you mention, I don't I may have missed it, uh the pistol you're going to for this, which one was it?
We haven't cited yet, there's the Glocks or SIGs.
You're looking at.
Those are the two main ones in the long.
Which 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 model of each?
So the Glock, uh sorry, Sig P three twenty, which is the way it currently has, so it'd be an upgraded mod version of that.
Okay.
Uh or the Glock forty five, which is also, they're all nine millimeter, uh striker for our polymer business.
Price is about the same.
Uh Glock's a little cheaper.
Is it really?
Yeah, so the bigger the biggest issue that I've always had with with handguns is that they they don't have any safeties on them, the safety is the trigger. You pull the trigger, that's it, there's no decocking levers, there's no safety levers. And SIGs impressed us years ago because they have three different hand grip sizes for different people, so you don't have to change out. You just change the handle out and it's in service for somebody who has a smaller handle or larger handle. Travis tells me Glock has elevated to that similar level, but uh I definitely don't want people, none of you had to decock your gun and put it in a holster, but. Yeah, it happens too often, so we don't want any, I don't want a hammer, I don't want any of that stuff on guns.
There was a report, um I believe last year that I read about either, and I don't recall if it's a SIG or the Glock. But they were they were firing without.
SIGs.
It's a SIG, yeah.
Yeah, fixed, I mean they took all of ours in, did whatever modification they had to do and assured us they were working fine, we have, we've never had that issue, I think they.
They had a drop test issue before, people were dropping them and they were going off, so they fixed that, now there's claims that they're just going off without anyone touching them.
Right.
But none of those claims have been uh.
It's substantial, right.
Caching, and a lot of probably just someone wasn't touching what they're supposed to be doing.
But they've they've already tested the system, the pistols we have and there's not issues, and they've corrected what they do, okay.
We shouldn't be dropping pistols anyway.
That's a training issue.
As the chief, I'm gonna have a hard issue with that, if you dropped the gun and it went off, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that was it, questions? Any other questions?
More.
That was his first time presenting probably to the biggest group ever, so.
Thank you.
Which ones do you guys prefer, SIGs or Glocks?
It's hard. Yeah, you're gonna care both both sides of the fight and the ones who don't like it are gonna find a way to make that SIG go off from the blade.
Having a having a beauty tournament of rock, paper, scissors sounds like.
It'll be the testing, everybody will have an opportunity to 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 shoot both of those weapons on the range and say, hey. Which ones do you like? If it does come down to that, then it it'll be a coin toss, so. All right, last one on here, I believe, is optic on signal preemption emitters. Costly, they're one time purchase of the vehicles, we considered them in years past, we'd never put them into a supplemental. We were going to start implementing them in the new vehicles that were coming from um. Enterprise, uh it it just got cut out somehow in that communication process in order of the cost for them, and then we end up getting more vehicles coming to us. As Ken was explaining that process, we really couldn't control how the vehicles are coming to us, they just started showing, they went, they never showed up, then they showed up. So traffic um is getting worse. Our police officers are ECA certified, part of our EMS system, we 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 do have to get places safely. And a complaint and an observation, we're watching videos, it's hard to get through traffic. If I have a few pet peeves as chief, one of them is driving too fast, driving like an, I'll say it like an idiot, okay? Driving, the first thing that most cops do across the country is they flick their lights and siren on and they think they can do anything they want. And if you read as much as I do on officer injuries or fatalities, a high percentage of those deaths are caused from officers driving too fast. And or hitting citizens, so what this does, Jason, the fire department has in in their all their vehicles, but it clears that intersection. It gives us the green arrow basically, and we are able to move through that traffic a lot smoother, so. It enhances our response time, cause I know that officers will will drive with due regard all the time.
Chief, out of respect for your time, would you prefer us wait to the end of this to ask questions or can we?
If it's related to this, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes.
The the thirty four four for the this system, the emitters, how many vehi- that's fifteen devices, so that's fifteen vehicles. Are they transferable to the new vehicles as we replace them under the lease program and how long?
As long as they're as long as they're working, uh how long?
I have, we have them on all our apparatus, but the four on our administrative cars, they're we're pulling them off and putting them on our new vehicles. That are coming in, the the our ve- our current vehicles are eight years old, they'll follow the last life of that.
So I'm assuming that it doesn't take any specialized people or equipment to to transfer them?
Well, you want to you want to install her, because it 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 installs into our uh control head for our red lights. Cause you have to do, it has to do several things, for one is obviously when you turn it on, goes, but when they get, say on a wreck. They put it in park, you want it to disable, because if it's still on and it's pointing downrange, it'll lock the interception up, so.
We haven't had to replace, I guess you're questioning, though, we still have, we haven't had to replace them, they're, we're still using the same stuff we bought years and years ago, so it's good.
Yeah.
Long journey.
As long, I mean, I've I've seen them twenty years old and they still work.
Okay.
I wish we could take them, move them from car to car, but just they're they're.
I moved mine from car to car, so.
I guess just to, you're getting this our total package for supplemental, so sure. If we have to make any cuts. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Our maintenance department has one facilities coordinator for three campuses and four buildings. Fire station, city hall, and two buildings in the Pollock Works uh site in the Parks and Rec. The city hall building is twenty four going on twenty five, fire station facility is is in the eighteen year range. And Pollock Works in the Parks building is coming up on eleven years old this year, this September. We've never done a facilities assessment. In a nutshell, facilities assessment is taking a a. Deep dive look into each facility. Looking at the building envelope, looking at all mechanical, all electrical, all plumbing, all roofs, um we've never done it. Sorta got burnt this year with the with a water intrusion in the main panel box coming in to the building. Read the insurance. Covered us and we were able to get back online within three weeks and get back to going to business. So that kinda prompted this request, to get an architectural firm to take a look at all four buildings, all three campuses. Give us a baseline um of our assets. Give us um it's be a good planning tool for maintenance, uh with facilities guys, and also provide us with the CIP. Moving forward in the future. These builders are just like owning a house, you know, they require maintenance. Stuff's gonna break, stuff gets old. And you have to invest in your your asset to keep it moving.
It's done by a third party for you?
It's done by architectural firms.
Okay.
They specialize in this, I could discuss that.
Right, uh yeah, we uh we're looking, have to work with PBK Architects, Scott Fisher, to be more specific, we've worked with him in the past. And they are well versed in, and he gave us um several references. He actually gave us the manuals that they produced for for some of their facilities.
They have the MEP structure, all those people in house?
They got them all in.
Okay.
So we certainly see the need for the assessment, I mean it hasn't been done since this building was put in put on the ground. And and I see that I see the importance of having the view, right, internal view. But I also see that as these buildings age, this is gonna become more prevalent in the future. Right now, you've got on a non recurring basis, are there any synergies we can achieve by speaking with whomever we choose to use? For an ongoing assessment, maybe on a five or ten year basis, that would save us some of these issues. Because we're going to have maintenance issues we're gonna have to repair, and if we can preempt those with reviews, it might save us some funds.
And you do that, it's recommended every ten to fifteen years to revisit, update the plans.
Yeah.
Look at the assessments, technology changes.
Right.
Equipment wears out. Yeah, so it 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 would be in the plan as a recommendation to do it every ten, fifteen.
In the CIP? Okay.
That's really our top choice uh in the supplemental packages that we have, however, it did cook together some other items, just a few. We'll zip through these pretty quick. This is kind of a precursory look at um a couple of new things and some existing items that we've been. In discussions, new items. in discussions, new items that have been in discussions. I wanted to start with some sidewalks in pedestrian mobility. So with the comprehensive plan, it was recommended to have pedestrian mobility throughout the city. And these are three areas that we could These are three areas that, that we wanna look at to, to do some of this pedestrian mobility. Selmair Lane is the, is the longest stretch. There's no sidewalks until you get close to the school. There is a couple of trail connections, one in the Victoria area, and one in the Murray Park area, and one in the Brazos area. This would propose. And again, this is a ten-thousand-foot view, open for discussion, for modifications. Looking at some kind of a striping plan from four oh seven, Selmair four oh seven, up into Brazos Boulevard. It's an extra-wide pavement section. We would propose restriping the entire cross-section to add in a five to seven-foot pedestrian lane. No park that one, that one side. Sign it correctly, then adding a concrete sidewalk from Brazos to the existing trailhead at, at Murray Park. Reason we would want a sidewalk there is because the pavement section was back to normal. Cross-section. Thirty-foot back to back, thirty-one foot back to back. Briar Hill sidewalk would be an addition. We would propose adding a sidewalk from Highland Shores Boulevard all the way to the trailhead and, and across the railroad and tie it into Briar Hill Phase One subdivision.
Is that just the east side or west side? Because the east side already has a sidewalk.
Correct, it'd be on the west side. It would incorporate Glen Ridge, Sugarloaf, the Coliseum Streets that are in there, as well as the neighborhood, connect to the trailhead. And cross, give another railroad crossing, pedestrian crossing, and tie into the existing sidewalk in Briar Hill.
And that, that would go from four oh seven all the way to Short Boulevard?
Yes.
In front of the school?
Yes.
Is the, the stripe, it's already on Selmair. Is that, is that currently a no-park stripe area?
No, it's a three-foot bike lane.
Yeah, it's just a bike lane.
It's a three-foot bike lane.
But taking away half the parking on that street is, I would ask for resident input, because, I mean, that's half of the parking. And when it would be on one side of the street, because you've got so many driveway, there's just a lot, you would really have to think.
Alright. And again, these are just preliminary precursor thoughts for the cop plan, to bring some mobility into the internals.
Have you done any pedestrian, would this include doing pedestrian impact analysis and all to see the need?
We could add that. There is, there is, there is some need. I mean, I hear, I, I've, over the years, I've heard from, you know, residents that are walking to and from to get their kids to and from school that, you know, they, they feel like they're playing froggers through there.
I'm looking at the longer-term issue though. If we're looking in, in the future, recent, in the near future, we're going to be considering micro-mobility vehicles. And a lot of these streets don't have any allowance for pedestrians or those type of vehicles, so.
We also have in our, in our street CIP for, actually I think it's funded next year, to start overlaying, re-overlaying Selmair Lane. It's split into three projects, so at that time, we would, we would start recommending input on a striping plan from council.
What kind of grant funding are you talking about?
Potential grants would be the Netco grant, and then we have a meeting Friday with engineering firm that's, that's seeking
Specializes in grant funding for these types.
Yeah, Tax Stop's gonna have another call for some grants, safe routes to schools, and then part of the, the federal dollars trickling down through COGS.
Are there any of the grant programs available or possibly available with the organization that emailed you? When we were talking about the
Yeah, and, and it looks like most of, most of those, the main categories are, are large-scale projects. The others are, are socio-economic qualified. The remainder of that will very likely go through the council of governments and they would have awards of projects with some of those.
So we would go through the council?
So we would go through the council. That's our best bet is to, is to try to get something to call on.
And everything kind of culminates through COGS, okay.
What firm would you be meeting with?
Um.
I forget the name.
Yeah, I do too. Give me a second. We'll go on to the next one.
So there's no strings attached. Those federal dollars, they create strings.
Yeah, the, the federal dollars, dollars, the way that they're broken out, and they're very specific about that. What, what amount can go towards professional services and a percentage of that, and then also the, the amount for construction. So their, the grants are, I mean, very, very specific about that. And that's why we need someone that is experienced with the, with those large grants like that. That'll, that'll help us navigate through that, use the, the, the dollars that we have to maximize that.
It's the other strings that they make the community make changes.
Right.
Those are the things that we need to be looking at carefully.
Sure.
Sometimes it costs more money to give free money.
I, I wouldn't need it.
I wanted to touch base on the Lakeside, Hillside options that we have discussed and looked at several times. I don't really have a recommendation from council or any direction from council, or costed out four different options. Do we want to table it to the future or back any more discussions on these?
I brought one of these up, so I'm, I'm really in favor of either the striping or the island. I think those are our best options, honestly. I like the roundabout. But I know, I think the roundabout on Short Boulevard is better than in this location. I think the islands might, might prove more beneficial. I like the striping issue because I think we need to allow for identifiable route for pedestrians and micro-mobility vehicles. But I, I lean toward the island for the aesthetics and the ability to slow the traffic.
Refresh my memory on the island?
We were proposing four traffic islands. If you remember, showed you some pictures of some traffic islands we have in the city now over in the Highland Oaks area of Mulholland.
There are many roundabouts.
Kind of all long.
Essentially, yeah, they're all long.
Last thing I remembered, and it really doesn't involve the striping so much, but the island, the roundabout, the speed bumps for sure, and the stop signs was based upon the survey results we got, it didn't indicate the need to do anything. The striping, I, I, the striping, I'm with Brian. I, I don't, I don't think the striping is, you know, some of these other things are chasing a problem that it really doesn't sound like exists. The striping is not addressing a problem, it's actually providing an amenity, I think. So, I mean.
Bear in mind, the striping also adds a no parking to one side.
It does. And I'm not, you live on that street?
I live off of that street.
Yeah, is the park, is there a parking issue?
I would say at certain times, if you're going down, particularly when, you know, it's hillside this way, then turns into lakeside. Lakeside's got a lot of on-street parking, a big portion of the day.
Stick it under advisement.
A couple of items that have come up recently is adding the turn lane on southbound twenty-four ninety-nine at Northwood. It was originally in the, in the original twenty-four ninety-nine Phase Four, Section Four, plans. It was removed at resident request. Now it's been resident request to put it back in. I think it was Diane Costa, our, our ECTA rep, and, and she's on the RTC. So she was talking to Andy Eads to try to fund money.
And then, it was kind of a dumb reason why it wasn't done in the beginning. A, a fear of the types of people that would be driving through the neighborhood, but it's never materialized.
And then even more recently, some signal improvements at twenty-four ninety-nine in Livo. And that consists, the request consists of providing a dedicated left turn.
That's a solution, looking for a problem, because the main complaint was, nobody follows any traffic rules anyway. Why would this, again, my opinion is without proper data requ- and per industry standard ASHTO and all that stuff. I mean, one person, that's a very expensive turn lane. We can name it, both of them after, if it's, if it's multiple requests and we have issues, but if it's one person that just keeps, then.
So, and this was also something both, both Councilman Feaster and Nelson asked that this be a conversation piece at our next council basis. They're not here and they live in that subdivision. So is this something that we are gonna talk about in two weeks?
I believe, I believe Paul's gonna add it to their
Yeah, we can certainly do that the next, the next meeting.
I just wanted to bring it up as part of this.
Yeah, and, and correspondence today between Paul and I, he was telling me about the lower part of this, and I asked the question about is that stupid business money term? When you take two things and you're leveraging time and money together to get the best outcome? Yeah, synergy, something like that. Anyway, I, I mentioned the turn lane at Northwood as a way to, because you're dealing with twenty-four ninety-nine, to maybe package them together.
Exactly, that's where I was gonna go next. So twenty-four ninety-nine, Section Four is gonna be expanded someday to a six-lane divided. The expansion is in the center. I understand right now it's not funded. The traffic load is not there yet, but it, it will come sooner than later.
Tax stop model, though, is when they do six lane, center lane straight, right, your three lanes, your right lane is for turning, your center lane's for going straight, and your left lane's for going straight and going to a turn lane. So that's why they do the six-lane model, is to eliminate the right turn lanes.
And the issue here with the, with the lack of the left turn lane in there is, there've been a, there've been a few accidents over the years where somebody's occupying that left lane, wanting to turn left, because there is no left turn lane, and they get rear-ended at the bottom of the hill. And I think there's even one accident where a car wound up at somebody's front porch, as it was only a collision.
Is that a left turn? Because you're not, so is the Northwood a left turn lane?
It's a southbound left turn.
Okay, okay. That, that makes sense then. Right turn doesn't make, but left turn is a different, that's a different story.
Yeah, there's a, there's a median gap there, but I, I was telling the mayor, I saw someone the other day turning left right there. There's clearly a sign not to turn left, but it creates an extremely dangerous situation. We added, we added the no-left turn. When we were directed to not construct the turn.
Can people do it anywhere?
And there again.
Yeah.
I, I think we can go a long way with public education for traffic safety, pedestrian safety, and we've got a wonderful trail system where you can exercise and not even have to go across. You can go under twenty-four ninety-nine. I just think that's a very low-budget thing.
And finally, I've been bringing these forward since 2021. These are two residents' requests. Highland Village Road, crosswalk at Cedar. It would require some extensive drainage work in the area. Site distance is an issue for a hands-free crossing that, that we went through, or we currently have in, in our inventory. In the hundred twenty-five dollar range, hundred twenty-five thousand dollar range. Creekside sidewalk improvements is also residential request in the Highland Shore subdivision in the Cool Number Two area. Be the hillside, Green Oaks, Creekside area. And it would be improving the sidewalk and the lack of sidewalk around that.
What's wrong with the existing sidewalk?
It's just a partial.
Who made it happen?
How much yours?
And why would we do it?
It's required.
Okay. I'm just saying. If, if it's their maintenance for their HOA, for their dues. They asked for it when they wanted it back in the day.
Back in the day. They didn't want it anymore. We've connected them since. That's really all I have.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, recreation, active net, recreation software integration. This is brought about by two, two interests. One, community frustration. Folks with the interface. Sorry, I'm having a hard time collecting my thoughts, but the, the interface that the, that the user has, when they're scheduling a program or wanting to buy services or things like that with active net. And then also Councilman Kixmiller asked us to look at this as well, to see if we, if there's any other software out there that can perform better than what we have here. In addition to that, we have some internal improvements that we wanted. One of them was interface with, or integrate with Vintec. Our Vintec machines are the pay stations that are out there at Copper's and out at Pilot Knoll. And right now, the active net system, the software system that we have, recreation program software system does not talk to that, so I'll give you a scenario. Let's say that there's a rental at Pilot Knoll at Big Oak, and the capacity is three hundred and twenty-five folks. That rental agreement is given a code, and that code can be passed on to the people that are wanting to come in and, and be a part of that, that event. And what happens is that code does not go away. It stays there for a long period of time. It doesn't have an end date. In addition to that, we can't set limits on it. So if there's, if the capacity is at three hundred and fifty people and we average, you know, two, two people per, per car, we'd wanna limit it to a hundred and fifty, to a hundred and seventy-five uses. And then anything beyond that, they have to go to the gatehouse to ask for permission to get in as a part of that. And they, the gatehouse would verify that the capacity is either under capacity at the, for the, for the, for the pavilion, or if it's over capacity and they shut it down right there. So we've had some problems with that. We've had, you know, a couple of thousand people at an event out there. And the cost also wasn't captured and we've lost money. So we're looking also at recapturing revenue, lost revenue that is there. And that's the same way on the camping side as well. And we're, there's some slides in there, they're gonna explain that, but I wanna give you some context before we go into those. And then I was asked to look at possibly bringing the rightaways and trails mowing in-house. Reason for that is, is we've been dealing with a contractor for about three years now, two years, roughly two and a half, three years, Brightview that is struggling to maintain the city and meet their contractual obligations. It's so bad that the directors from Flower Mound and Lewisville, we all met together. And we talked about the contract services and, and talked about capacity, and they're at fifty percent, and we are at about fifty percent as well, and they're getting complaints from the community, we're getting complaints. So we tried to team up and, and as collectively and put pressure on Brightview, but they're just not responding. We did go out to bid this year. We got, Brightview was the lowest price, about fifty to sixty thousand dollars cheaper than the next one. And I'm gonna go into the numbers of that with a, with a slide. So we did a, a little work with that with Ken's help and basically came up with a cost that provides a savings to the city if we bring that in-house and purchase the equipment and, and bring staff on in order to do that. Alright, so the trails and rightaway mowing, current contract's two hundred and twenty, two thousand. There's twenty-nine acres of trail mowing in There's twenty-nine acres of trail mowing and trimming, seventeen acres of right-of-way mowing and trimming, five amenities stations for bed care and eight annual planting beds for seasonal color within that contract. Uh, this is the contract right here. Um, so it's Castlewood Trail, City Trail, Lake Vista Trail, Coppers Trail, Victoria Trail, District Trail, and Village Trail. And this is where we get the majority of the complaints. Uh, we have a, a very active community. I think someone made the comment here, I think it was you, Rhonda, uh, that the fact that the trail system is very robust and it, and it's used, uh, quite a bit, quite often. Uh, so the complaints were non-mowing. Um, and basically Brightview not being able to keep up with their, with their obligations as far as what we have in the contract for mow events during the growing season.
Can you? The, the, the city trail from, is that from, uh, Doubletree to twenty-four ninety-nine?
No, it's, uh, twenty-four ninety-nine to Victoria Park.
To Victoria Park?
Hmm.
But isn't that segment on twenty-four ninety-nine at least to Ryer Hill, isn't that maintained by the HOA?
We maintain six feet on either side. HOA.
That's the, the first six feet on either side? Okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah.
Then they have the gap for the annual non-mow area and then they take care of it after that? Okay.
Yeah, that's, yep. And this is just a, a section that we have, um, in the RFP when we go out for bids that shows the exact areas. And this is a section of City Trail where it connects to Victoria Trail and the areas that we mow in Victoria Trail. That's just a, a, a look of what, of what it looks like. So we have it down to segments, square footage, in order to, one, maximize our dollars so that there's no, um, misunderstanding about what it is that, uh, folks need to mow. And, um, and, uh, can't remember the other thing. It's getting late in the evening. I'm getting tired. Um, these are the right-of-way mowing. This, these are, uh, streets, Marauder Park. We've got, uh, parts of, uh, Brazos, Selmaire, Justin Road, um, and Highland Village Road. Going to thirty-five. And the fire station, fire station's in this as well.
What is the outlier on the left?
What is this?
That Harlington.
Harlington, thank you. Yes.
But once residents move next door, like on Selmaire, why, why aren't they mowing? I mean, I mow mine right-of-way.
We thank you for that.
I'm just saying.
Appreciate that.
But, but the reason why we mow right-of-ways is when there's not a home.
Right. So Selmaire, there's just a small section. Right?
Yeah, there's that, it's the entry to the, to the trail on the west side and then the entrance to, to Wichita Forest.
And we have a trail segment.
Wichita State's where it's going. I want to keep, I want to hear from residents, but it's Marauder Park.
Yeah, Marauder. Exactly. So there, there's some issues there. We want to improve that.
Can we not turn over the, uh, Harlington to, to the HOA? There's specific reason we're doing that one?
Is Harlington an HOA? I don't know.
That development, I thought on the south side of Harlington, I thought.
They, they maintain, uh, the HOA maintains from twenty-four ninety-nine to Millington.
Okay.
That's where that HOA ends.
Is that because that was the land where the school was going to go?
Yeah. So this is a section of, um, basically within the RFP that, that lines out the exact mowing areas, just to provide for some context.
It goes all the way down Brazos, right?
Yeah, it's just a, the level of detail that we, that we explicitly expect, uh, or that we provide. Uh, so recommending that the city takes on the trail right-of-way mowing, uh, the benefits would be improved quality and consistency. And we'd have an ongoing savings of about forty-seven thousand dollars a year, and we would do a better job, quite frankly. And here's the breakdown from personnel and equipment, um, trailer and the, the totals, the initial cost and then the reoccurring cost. And there's the personnel full cost over there on the, in this little box up here. This is, yeah, right here. And remember the, the, going back, the contract, uh, was two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Which is right, or, yeah, which is right here. Okay, so this is, uh, general fund. This contract is broken up into the general fund, the areas, um, that are not trail sites. That's the right-of-ways, streets, uh, fire station, things like that. And then the, uh, four B, that's the trail sections.
Four B?
Four B is trails.
Does four B have the?
Yeah, yes, it does.
The full cost of personnel, is that fully loaded benefits and everything? Is that just your annual salary?
It's full.
It's full.
So would you scale up in the grass growing season and scale down in the not grass growing season?
Exactly. It's basically a hundred and thirty days during the growing season.
And that's where your part-time person comes in?
Hmm, yes, ma'am.
So you, you'd have two full times and two part-times, is what that?
Hmm, seasonal help. Yep. So it's broken down with the ongoing difference, the initial equipment cost, and then the initial, uh, year cost.
When does the contract end?
We can, we can give them thirty days notice and it can end after that.
And when would you propose doing it, beginning if you do?
The best time to make that transition is during the winter, but there's some, there's some challenges with that. And one of them is getting trucks, as was spoken about before. So we, we'd have to look at, is it, should we go rent a truck from a standard rental place and a commercial rental place for, uh, maintenance equipment? You know, that places like that, that just rent the basic, basic truck for construction. And what that cost is. And then getting the equipment in. Um, there's a backlog on the equipment. I work, we work pretty closely with Sam in, in, uh, in maintenance. And, uh, he's pretty good about getting that stuff ordered. But then there's a, like what's experienced, being experienced on the enterprise side, there's a backlog in equipment. So we would want to make sure that if we did this, that we could get the equipment, get the trailer, and have a rental truck in place. So the goal is to do it, um, this winter. Let the contractor go through, uh, through October, and then we would start having discussions. I'd be working with Sam and whoever on the fleet side, um, to understand what the timing of getting mowers and things like that or in the trailer as well. And, and try to get some type of a, a target date that, that makes sense, that won't leave us in a bind. So the, the timing is perfect for that because the, you know, the winter is, uh, is, uh, we, we switch our maintenance efforts from mowing to maintenance, facility maintenance, you know, bed prep.
Which goes back to my next question about the crew leader in Park Tech during the winter months. I mean, they obviously would be utilized for those, those as well, but in, in times of slower demand on their time, um, would they be able to be utilized in other areas in your department that?
Yes, and it, it, it's the same maintenance workflow model that we have for other mowing crews. So they mow a hundred and thirty days, a hundred and forty days, and then they go into maintenance. They go into tree trimming. They go into a small project work, concrete work, painting, and then we have events in there. Um, but to get ready, we start doing Christmas at the ranch towards the end of September and October and start putting lights up. There's, it's, it's constant. So it's not really downtime. It's just the work switches, the work tasks.
So then it would take a little bit of pressure off your current staff and with the additional two employees picking up some of that load?
Well, they're, the, the twenty-nine and seventeen acres still require winter work. So they'll, they would be mulching during the winter, replacing plant material, things like that.
So their primary focus is just going to be on this piece then?
The majority of it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It sounds like, um, that gives two more people to take pride in our city, eyes on our city. And the best people can know what's going on and keep in, it, it kind of dovetails into your community policing model and that you have more care into your community.
Since you brought that up, we, this year, we, we made an intentional effort to work with police department. And, um, I gave, gave a presentation, uh, joint police and, and parks to the park board about, uh, SEPTED, uh, crime prevention through environmental design. Where our staff team, um, received information and input from police at each park site as far as recommendations and what they need to be able to see, um, uh, li- uh, oh my gosh. Sightlines, um, lighting and recommendations like that. We've already started implementing those and that's going to be an annual thing that we do. So this, this team that we're putting together would, would take on a lot of that as well.
Okay.
You know, one thing about it, not to belabor too much, but showing that concept means that, that's assuming the contract cost that we have now. And as Phil mentioned, when we bid it out, the second contract was how much more?
Uh, over the original contract, it was eighty-eight thousand. Over Brightview, it was about fifty thousand.
We would have loved to have had them. They're doing the work on twenty-four ninety-nine. They're doing a great job. But that, that cost, I was really, the future could even be greater than that. And I, I think what you're making, Rhonda, with, with our people, taking that community pride in it, I, I, I think it's a, a real win for us.
Okay, recreation, uh, software. This is what you see on the dashboard. If you want to, uh, purchase an event, our tickets, father-daughter dance, um, that's just a, a splash page. Um, so the assessment highlights, uh, the, the evaluation of six vendors. And six vendors that are used in this area and primarily in the industry, um, top six, including, uh, the current software that we use, ActiveNet. Uh, integration of Vintec and Musco system. Musco is our lighting system that we have for athletic fields, tennis courts, things like that. Uh, customer experience, um, service offering and fees, reporting, and then finally a recommendation. So there's only a few slides here, but it's going to hit the highlights. So the overall composite score results, uh, Eve Software was evaluated comparatively across three categories and weighted a hundred point scale. We basically, uh, they basically got it down to the top three. And you can see the scoring, customer service experience, service offerings, point of sale, reporting, implementation. And then we look at compatibility, uh, with the different systems to integrate. And then, uh, architectural assessments, reliability, planned maintenance, recovery, performance, scalability, uh, confidentiality, and authen- auth- authentication. And you can see the scores are relatively closer within less than three points of each other with these top three.
Only less than two, which is.
Is it less than two?
No, they're only less than, the only two metrics that they're less than is scalability and implementation. That's pretty good. They're equal or greater than all others.
So the recommendation, I kind of highlighted these areas. Um, it is, uh, worthy mentioning that Active, ActiveNet dominated the pricing comparison section, noting lower fees and costs than its peers. And that Highland Village should continue to use ActiveNet with the following considerations, which is implement and upgrade, uh, system configurations, which, uh, we're working on now. Um, as far as training, actually the second one, receive training on upgrading features and system use. And some of the features have been turned on. Implement the Musco lighting integration and implement Terologic custom application for Vintec integration and automate the Musco lighting system. And then down here, ActiveNet's, uh, transaction model. Pricing structure is by far the more attractive and affordable option amongst its peers. And ActiveNet currently has an integration with Musco. Has APIs sufficient enough to, uh, support custom development for Vintec integration, and that's a big one for us.
Can you quickly briefly explain Vintec integration and Musco lighting?
Yeah, so the integration is just basically that patch where, uh, ActiveNet or the recreation software can talk to Vintec. And, and, uh, we can, you know, uh, close some of the gaps that we have with that system, which is putting end dates dynamically on, uh, on rental, uh, on access codes. Whether it's, uh, for an event or it's for, uh, camping, uh, things like that. And we can, uh, with that also, uh, we'll be able to capture, uh, lost revenue. So we're, we're, we're pretty excited about that. And then Musco, that's that, uh, integration with Musco is basically that if someone wants to schedule, um, a field, uh, they, ActiveNet will hold the scheduling, uh, piece of it, but we can also schedule the lights at the same time, which we can't do right now, all through the same system.
I also noticed on their website, it said, um, it also can have a merchandise.
Yes, it can for a store. And we looked at those opportunities at Pilot Knoll. It, when we rebuild the gatehouse. Uh, but I think it's going to be cost prohibitive because of the construction cost of materials have gone up so much that we're, we're not going to have that, uh, ability to add a store in there.
Online merch.
Oh, online merch, yeah, sure.
Accessible and PD T-shirts.
I'm just saying.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can, absolutely.
It says right here merchandise. And I know, um, like, we'll go to, um, we spend a lot of time at the Gravevine Rec Center, um, with parties and stuff, and they've got like different things and you can go to the online as well. It's just, I'm just, I'm just not wanting to get beat by Flower Mound, I'm telling you. I saw that and it just purchased the way to go. It is under my skin.
Was the price difference, or a difference between Active?
We're getting to that. Yeah.
Is it hopefully a whole hometown discount since they're down in Dallas right now? Could we get some of that?
We'll show it here in just a second, but I wanted to finish that online merch. When, when we talk about that, we also have to talk about warehousing and then who's going to manage the supply and the demand? And who's going to, who's going to facilitate the point of sale?
Amazon.
Yeah.
And if that, if that's the case, that's great. That's great. That's awesome.
They actually do have a, and they're actually rolling it out in North Texas. They started Denton was their first test subject, is working with cities and small businesses to help with their inventory delivery and also it makes you buy local.
That's awesome. All right, so this is the first year, um, comparison. These are the description of things that, um, um, that are part of this bottom line. The training is budgeted this year, uh, so that comes off the bottom line. Um, and these are the costs associated with each one of these tasks. As you can see, ActiveNet, um, is at a better price point, except for the things that are set prices. This is Vintec integration. All through here, you come out to this bottom price of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the first year, a hundred and seventy-seven, a hundred and sixty-four. Okay? And then the next slide, um, is comparison for year two. This is what we will pay year two versus Civic Rec and Smart Rec. And these are ongoing costs, reoccurring costs. All right? So you can see it's significantly less. So the, the budget, um, ActiveNet has an existing integration with Musco and, and charges a one-time fee for use. Uh, ActiveNet charges a one-time fee for the use of API using APIs required for Vintec. That's the patch for the integration. And Vintec integration will be a combined effort of Terologic and Vintec. Their, Terologic's going to be the host site, and the total amount includes development costs for both companies. And Terologic will spearhead the implementation process. Terologic and Vintec charge an annual integration maintenance fee for hosting the API. And this is a reoccurring annual cost right here. And then Terologic will manage the vendor requests and provide support requested by the, uh, by the city. And that's that annual premium support. We're going to pay for that this first year, but, uh, because we think it's important that, that if we're, if we're wanting to improve the system, we want to use all of the tools, uh, that are given to us to make sure that we are optimizing that success. Um, but after the first year, I am. But after the first year, I am hopeful that we won't have to pay this premium cost and it will just be this cost, the recurring cost there. And that's, that's what they display here in the second year as needed. I believe that's it. Is there any questions? I think Sunny would be proud of me, using all her language. Had to borrow her dictionary.
The first request is a no-brainer. I pulled the trigger on that one. The others we got to consider.
I'm going to close out this short meeting.
So again, going back to our five-year outlook and we apply the, like I said, we did all the supplemental that we presented, at least of that first sheet. We look down at our bottom line and we're, again, our policies for fund balance are twenty to twenty-five range. That's where we're looking. So, so twenty-two percent.
I think in that slide at the Saturday meeting.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, I was going to say it was like, yeah.
So, you know, there's a lot of variables in here. Again, remember the assess valuation and, you know, we need one of these years, a recession could, or market correction in housing. And there's so many things that can come into play. We got unknowns with our enterprise and leasing and so, but I think relatively, we, it's not a, this is a good message, but one thing we have to be mindful for is this net decrease in spending, which, you know, we have a level of spending that is what we have for the operations that while we do. And we can't magic, you know, say, well, we need to cut out half a million. What are we going to cut? We're going to cut services somewhere to do that. So the solution is not here, the solution is up here. And that's between now and then, this is where we need to rectify that. And that's really the bottom line message. You know, we'll certainly do our best to control the growth of this down here, but, yeah, and we can cut here and there and all that, but it's not going to be, we're not going to cut our way out of this situation going forward. That's all I got for tonight. Next meeting, we'll look at our special revenue funds, or like utility fund. And then, you know, the second meeting in August, if we need follow-up in anything, we can clearly address that in September. Deal hopefully, so. Have more fun building meetings to come.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you for your all attention and diligence. It was a lot of stuff.
Thanks for reminding us to come back in here instead of out there, because you can see it's much more valuable.
A lot easier.
Any further questions, comments?
Thank you for all the contributions. Yes, Scott, please. Fire everyone.
Thank you.
With that, we are adjourned at nine forty-nine.